They're just the high points.
Kind of just the high points.
So does this stuff that is, this stuff's all recorded so it's all, we're discussing things that are still, we need someone to go back and look for it.
Right.
Okay. I can hear her moving papers now.
No.
So don't yell at you anymore, you mean?
I can understand it.
I heard a funny joke the other day that said that there was a husband and a wife and the husband was always whispering at home and she goes, "Why do you always whisper?" He's like, "Well, I don't want Mark Zuckerberg to hear me." And then he laughs, she laughs, Alexa laughs, Siri laughs.
Well, there's that.
Alright, it's nine o'clock by that clock, I'll call this meeting of the Mercer County Commission to order. First thing, we got Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as the agenda, I'd like to add the new state mileage rate. So we'll put mileage rate. And then transfer of secondary road fund to county road fund account.
To county road?
Yes. Is there any other additions?
Well, we'll probably have to, let's review our policy, our, the, our, um, portfolio holder positions.
Oh.
She's stuck there. It's Alzheimer's kicking in.
So portfolio assignments?
Yeah, let's just review those in case they were added.
Okay. Any other additions to the agenda?
Liza, did you have anything for addition?
Name of each agenda?
Yes.
Yep. Okay.
That's two minutes off from our self-ownance.
You're right on time, except for this clock. Okay, is there a motion to prove the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second? Second by Jamie? Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
How about aye, that motion passes? Uh, time for reorganization of the board, so I'll turn it over to Carmen to start with the chair position.
Okay, so I'm gonna call for nominations for the chairman.
I'll nominate Jean.
Okay, Jamie nominated Jean.
I'll second.
Um, okay, I, I'm kind of following what Shannon did. Okay, and then I ask, before you second it, I'm just asking for nominations, so we have Jean, and now I'm gonna ask for any other nominations. So we got any other nominations? And a third time, any other nominations? Hearing none. Okay, so then, someone has to move for nominations to cease?
Also moved.
Okay, Bowman's also moved.
I'll second Carmen.
Okay, and Taylor seconded? Alright, and, okay. So Jamie, how do you vote?
Aye. Yes.
Okay, and then.
Oh, it's fine.
No, you're good, and then it would be, uh, Liza, because you seconded it, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Alright. So Jean, is there a new? Okay, and now I call for.
Now, now you're turning it over to the chair.
Okay, I've got a, okay, hold on here, let's see, seconded. Chairman of the chair called, okay, and then she called for nominations for vice chair before she handed it over.
Yeah.
At least this is how Shannon did it in 21.
I know, it's generally you, once the, uh, the chairman.
The auditor calls for nominations for vice chair.
Yep, and then the chairman will now take over. The old chair, the new chair, whoever the chair is, and then they call for nominations for vice.
Alright, I will turn the meeting over to you, Jean.
Correct?
Yep, you can do it either way, I would do.
I know.
I would just take it over because you have it now, so.
Okay, so now I, I'm gonna ask for nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Travis, right?
I'll nominate Rick.
Okay, I have a nomination for Travis, nomination for Rick, are there any nomi, any further nominations for vice chair? Are there any further nominations for vice chair? Are there any nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. Do I have a second to approve Travis and Rick?
I'll move to close the nominations for vice chair.
Okay. Wasn't sure exactly how to proceed with that, but.
You need a second?
Yep.
You have a second? We seconded.
I did.
Right.
Okay, Rick. Okay. Uh, Travis voted to close, we'll just start with Travis, who do you vote for?
I'll vote for Travis.
Uh, Rick, who do you vote for?
I'll vote Rick.
Jamie, who do you vote for?
Rick.
Liza?
Travis.
I'm gonna leave this to the chair.
That's right.
I'll vote Rick. Okay. That's it for.
Okay. Turning back, okay. Yep, that's it, so now.
Alright. Anybody have any problems with the procedure we used?
Okay.
Nope.
Alright. Well, then we move on, approval of the minutes of the December 20th meeting? I guess I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Also, also moved to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second. It's Liza.
Gotcha. Are there any questions? Changes? Hearing none, Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean votes aye. Minutes are approved. Okay, now we'll review and approve our vouchers. And just for the people in the audience, we go through every bill and this could, on average, it takes us about 20 to 30 minutes, so until about 9:30, so if you wanna get a cup of coffee or go walk the halls.
So gonna bowl in the world again?
You're not gonna wanna hear, wanna hear what I have to say. You're gonna wish your hearing aids were off.
I can always turn them off.
This is secondary road. Yep, it was stuck. What's that?
You wait till you're 66.
Pardon?
I'll be happy to make it to 66, okay?
I had a, almost stumbled, trying to think of the name.
Did we know the right extension of this change? Isn't this probably usually a change in the name?
I think it was like a, just a bit, a little bit, I think it was in the lease contract.
Okay.
For which one? The chairman.
The chairman, there was only one nomination.
Which was for Jean?
For Jean.
And who made it that?
And that was made by Jamie.
Yeah. I thought that bill. Very.
Okay.
I.
This is round is a little different.
Yes, Liza, Liza's seconded.
Yes. Yes, we did.
And then we chose.
Yes.
I just thought it was a.
And then I was here for the vice chair.
For this?
Yes.
Not a little bit.
No, that's all you, yeah.
Which I got.
You got the, okay. Yep, you were welcome.
Yes.
Okay, and that's fine with me, I just had never done it, so I was kind of following what they had.
That's fine, that's, I'm just saying.
Next year you'll know.
What's that?
Next year you'll know.
Hey, I'm taking notes, we're gonna do better.
I've seen it before.
Okay.
I do most often what you say.
But I do, yeah, I like that, once you get a chair.
And like we all said, it's, it's adjusted.
Right, right, exactly, it's not line, it's not a absolute. No. Yeah, there's not a, what would you call it, the 11th amendment, this is how a meeting should be run. Right, right.
What is another?
So maybe it was.
67?
Bill, it was just a name, maybe. Okay, I just wanna make sure we have.
Carmen?
Yes.
Can we go into like the funeral costs and stuff like that, I thought last time we had a bill come through for Kimmy's, but did we not pay that last time?
Okay, what are you talking about?
For the funeral costs? I thought I remembered last time.
Yes.
We were going through bills that we paid for, for Kimmy's for the sandwiches and stuff, but now it's on this one again?
I know, no, no.
I don't remember that.
Okay, I don't know about Kimmy's, but I know last time there was Bronson's, that, those sandwiches were from Bronson's.
That was Bronson's, okay.
And they got paid, Kimmy's, that must have been the sheriff's office thing.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't double pay.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't want to do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're good with that?
As long as there's a receipt there.
We're good with it, okay.
I don't remember seeing.
I just remember seeing one.
There was something there. No, Bronson's was last time, that was that, 1800 for sandwiches.
Gotcha.
Everybody else has got their own box.
Don't take my clothes.
My clothes.
I want Jean's box, that looks like a nicer box. Does nothing but live off of Kleenexes and cough drops. The kids all got it first, and the husband and then, I'm the last to fall, but.
Sometimes that's the hardest.
Yeah, because I've been, I've been everybody else in my house.
I said, no, he's gonna double it.
But you're gonna, I told him you're gonna get paid so like if it says, you know, a month.
My two oldest had their child, it was off the end of November, and as soon as my oldest went back to school, he brought this whole. And we've all read six cents.
So this one would be paying 55, Carmen?
Okay, and what?
These two Bronson bills, they were added together and then.
Yep, and this was.
That's what it was, it was split out then, because the other one's over there.
Because everything on here should have this.
Well, it was just looking at the total, yeah. Maybe 16 and then five and eight is. The other one was, was five.
Right, and I wonder if.
I think they were added together.
This balance. She just is only paying one.
That's what it looks like in the news, it's like they were split out between those two bills.
Yep.
Yep.
What?
I'm not seeing one. Bad joke.
Bad joke.
Did you do it?
I have some money. For these guys.
Do you have that paper that I was saying?
Probably just wondering if you could have this done. No.
Sure, I was like, we should have updated, she used to. Years and years ago. Like a long.
Hey Carmen? Can we make sure we get ahold of the NACO and make sure they have the right attention to person, because here it says Pamela Draft, I don't even know who that is.
She, uh, used to work in the auditor's office.
Yeah, so maybe just get ahold of them and make sure they put your name on there.
That's like, that's not.
It's like a membership.
It's not, it's not this where it's like the.
Okay, yeah, just make sure that we, you know, get a proper name on there for us.
So you're staying out of pay until late?
No, I'm fine with that, I'm just saying.
I've run into that before, really, one organization will have like 12 different, like databases, depending on who does stuff.
Who does what, yeah, and sometimes you don't have to change.
Somebody just never update.
Is this for your office, is it?
Yeah.
Where's this office? I guess it could pass. Here you are in the light blue.
Okay, let's see this, okay, this is for the extensions.
That's Liza, the Liza's office.
Is it Liza's?
Liza's there, I don't know, David no more.
It's over, well, it's in the interstate.
It's where interstate engineering is, it's where I am, so the state pays half actually of that.
That's always asking.
And then the county pays, it looks like we pay, the county pays the full, but actually the state reimburses for half of it too.
I was just asking location.
Location, yeah.
As a question.
Buo on a hill.
It's the Mercer County Properties Zones, I've known. Um, it's, I don't know.
It's like a group of like.
Four, five, or yeah, nine.
Nine people actually that.
No.
No, separate.
Isn't there a name to that?
There is an eye question, it's because the name on the bill.
Uh.
They call it something.
Hillcrest?
I think it's Hillcrest, yeah, something like that. Office complex.
Yeah, but it changed ownership, what, about two years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Carmen, what do we do with these guys so far?
Actually, right now they're working on our, what do you call it, our server, our server, and getting it set up, and we should be starting working with them in January.
Can you put that on the agenda, Carmen, for next time, just for an update overall between the departments of what Tyler, where we're at, I guess?
Under other.
Yes.
Yeah.
Tyler's software update.
Yep.
Well, the bill came through and I was gonna ask, but I figured it wasn't on our agenda, so.
We won't likely will be asked about it, so.
What do you, oh, no, I like this, yeah, I want to put things on here, because we definitely, yeah. we definitely, yeah. Oh, absolutely, and I'll tell you how much we hate them and where we sit.
Thursday?
Yeah.
Tuesday?
No, it's usually a Thursday, I think.
That would be, uh, the eighteenth. Fifteenth, Monday, sixteenth, Friday.
Is that all of them or Rick still has one to ask him?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the bills as presented.
I'll second.
Any further? Any further questions on the bills? Okay. We had Travis, Rick. Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jeanne, aye. Okay. Metta's not here yet. Core facilities. Well, duplicate, under other business, duplicate warrant four nine, four three nine for... I'm not even gonna try, Sawyer Zing?
Yep.
One thousand dollars.
Yep, he lost the check.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Do, do...
Jamie?
Jamie? I'll second.
Gotta separate you two. Travis. Any discussion? Okay. Carmen?
Yes.
You were saying? He lost the check or?
Yeah, he lost it and, and we're just requesting this replacement warrant to replace the money that he lost.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jeanne votes aye. Okay. Relinquish control of Buella extraterritorial zone, did I say that right, is it extraterritorial?
Yes.
I usually beat that up. Okay, um, let's just, is there a motion to move to relinquish control of the Buella extraterritorial zone? Oh, let me rephrase that question. Because Buella's not relinquishing it, it would be Mercer County. So do I have a motion to, for Mercer County to relinquish control of the extraterrestrial zone around Buella? That's the, the half mile beyond. What did I say?
Terrestrial.
I did. Extraterritorial zone, sorry. No one's gonna make a motion on the terrestrial?
Not the terrestrial.
No, I don't think so.
To start discussion, I'll move to approve the relinquishing of the joint jurisdiction for Buella ET zone.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
First of discussion, I'll second it.
Okay. Do I have any discussion, any questions?
So as far as regardless of the city and Mercer County, um, I'm just gonna say what I said when we did Stanton's. Stanton came in, they presented, they wanted us to relinquish it, we did. Buella came in after that, we denied them. I, I don't know if we really understand or how we should proceed with these. My only thing is we should be consistent, if we're allowing one city to have sole jurisdiction of their ET zone, any other city that comes in should be, um, treated the same way. I know Buella's considerably larger than Stanton, but it's kind of more of a how do you say to one city that, um, we don't believe in you and the other city we do regardless of population size? So I just, my only thing is I think we should be consistent and as far as Stanton, we've already given it to them. I'm not saying that if we don't do it to Buella, we should relinquish Stanton's, I'm just saying we should be consistent. Um, as far as the county planning and zoning goes, um... There should be things that county planning and zoning should do with each city so that if there is, um, growth or stuff outside these cities that we can be in harmony, um, with county zoning and city zoning. But just to target one city versus another, I think we should be consistent and, and that's why I think we should, um, relinquish the control over Buella, I think of planning and zoning is not opposed to it, I know Cindy's not opposed to it, so, um, that's just my thoughts.
I guess my thoughts are, I echo the thought about P and Z that we would wanna work with that and make ours a better fit with Buella P and Z, but I, I, I wasn't here when you guys put it into, to, uh, voted to Stanton, but I, I, I am not in favor of relinquishing control from the county, that, that's just how I view it because of once, I, I probably would have voted no on, on with Stanton too and I, and I'm not, that's where I view it is, uh, I, I don't wanna give up all the control we have, I'd rather work hand in hand with the, with the cities to, you know, maintain what we do have.
Yeah, when when Stanton requested there for us to relinquish it, there was no opposition and it was first time that, that had even been requested by any city while I was on the commission. And, um, when Buella requested it, I had at least two, if not three, because I don't have it on me today, um, county residents who would be affected by this and they were opposed to it. So...
On that note, I've had about four or five calls that opposed to that too.
Do those people in opposition understand that Buella had extended their extraterritorial and they're under that jurisdictionary alert regardless if we have joint control or not?
Yes, they, they do know, they just said they wanna have like a, I, I don't even know exactly how to word it, but a, a second chance or, they know they would have to go to two entities, they, they knew that. I said, okay.
I think the biggest concern that I had was what some of the citizens had echoed to me as far as not being able to have a vote in Buella because they aren't actually in the city of Buella in regards to that and then if it was taken over by the city of Buella, then they wouldn't have the ability to vote or anything as far as commission or those who would be on those boards to represent them or represent any issues that they would have.
That was one concern that hurt too.
Any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Nay.
Liza?
Nay.
Jamie?
Nay.
Jeanne will vote nay, motion defeated. Um... New mile, new state mileage rates.
Okay, you guys got a copy of that?
I'll move to accept the state mileage rate of sixty seven cents for twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Holy cow.
Jamie.
Yep, I was looking at the same time that Travis made the motion and Jamie seconded. And is there any further discussion on the new mileage rate of sixty seven cents per mile? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jeanne will vote aye. Okay, transfer secondary road funds to road, that one I have no idea.
Okay, this is, um, we just found this out from state because, okay, the public voted that ten because the secondary road fund is going away.
Yep.
Let me call, um... I gotta call Dawn and she wants to be in here.
Okay.
Hey Dawn, we're talking about the transfer of funds. Thanks. Yes.
We'll wait for her.
Yeah, we'll wait for Dawn and then we can...
Because she'll be right in.
Talk about this.
Now we need the jeopardy music.
Yeah, I can hear the clicking, she's here. Let's open a new world to you.
Oh, there she is, okay.
Okay, so I was just telling them, Dawn, that, uh, we, we just found this out yesterday that we need to transfer that secondary road fund that's going to be gone next year into the county road fund and that's where the public voted for the extra ten mils to compensate for that. So then our next budget will be strictly the county road with those extra ten mils and we won't be using that secondary road fund. And what we're doing is we're coming to the board so you guys are aware of what we're doing and why we're doing it and requesting, uh, a motion to approve this. You wanna add anything, Dawn?
And this is where it's supposed to go, this is how we want it, okay?
So procedurally, we can do that? I understand, it makes sense and it's about doing, but we're not in violation of any... Okay. Okay, all right.
I'll make a motion to move, uh, transfer the funds from the twenty-one sixty to the twenty-one forty for the county roads.
I'll second.
Jamie?
Yes, Jamie.
Can I just clarify, I mean, what were the, the date side events? Twenty-three and twenty-four, so if this would be effective for the twenty-twenty-four budget?
Yes.
And then would be the twenty-twenty-three taxes, they, that, those would continue basically as they've been done, but getting transferred? And then twenty-twenty-four taxes coming, that would be the first?
It would also require this tax.
Yeah, and, and...
So we will tax for all of those until those taxes are put off. If that part officially go away, but until we're still using it at this point.
Right. So for...
Motion can, well, we don't have to do it every time you wanna transfer, this will cover it or anything, okay?
That was, I was gonna clarify, this would be throughout the year or in perpetuity. Um, the only thing I would mention is that we would have had to do this regardless if the vote would have passed or not because this was gonna go away. So the, the vote really had nothing to do with this, it gave us the ability to additionally tax roads, just not in the secondary, so...
Don't say additionally. It's kind of a...
I mean, if, if needed type thing, but...
It just kind of a, it, it moved it.
Right.
It, it didn't add taxes, it...
Replaced. Or how do you, everyone you wanted to say?
It's a bookkeeping procedure.
Right.
On our part, on Dawn's part.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that because as soon as you said
Additional.
Additional taxes, it's, it's...
Yeah, and I just wanted to say that we would have had to do this even if it failed. Um, so, and then like, like Dawn mentioned, any delinquent taxes that are that would eventually go to this, that fund would have to stay open until there wouldn't be any more of those, so...
I'd say, because we'd have to wait till it, if people were behind for the three years, we'd have to have that auction and all that kinda stuff would have to happen before. Yeah, so it could be a few years, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Rick?
Oh boy, aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jeanne, aye. Well, that's for the next, um, what time are we at, nine forty-two?
Yeah, I know Metta's here.
There she is.
Just keep walking right up to the podium.
Perfect timing.
Nope.
Perfect timing. NDSU Extension Agent, Extension Update.
Hello.
Good morning.
Metta Fleer, if you don't know who I am. And, uh, I am the Family and Community Wellness Agent. Little bit different than Craig Askam, who you probably see a little more often. Uh, Craig is our agricultural agent, but my focus is on, uh, family, community and also just people of all ages and so my job is to assess the need of what our citizens in our county and in our state need and then, um, disseminate educational programs and help people with resources. I kinda try to bring different, um, aspects and agencies, for instance, like schools and, um, maybe, uh, food banks, try to connect the pieces for people in our county and organization. And so, um, I haven't come to just kinda tell you a little bit about what I'm doing, we do put a narrative out every month, I don't know if you get a chance to read it, but I know there's probably a lot of things you have to read. But, uh, that's one way we communicate with you, but I thought it would be nice just to see you personally and, um, just tell you a little bit about what I did, did for the year, but I don't wanna take too much of your time, so... Um, I, uh, also want to thank you, first of all, I'm looking at my cards now. Okay, so I do wanna thank you for, uh, filling my position after Dina Kement left and then there was a break for a couple of years and then there was some question, I understand, and maybe of, oh, filling it or not filling it, but you did. And, uh, I just feel I love my job and it really is a privilege to kinda work with all the people in our counties and I've just met a lot of people and found a lot of need and also, uh, I'll be here two years on January eighteenth. I also want to thank you for all the trainings you've sent me to. I have, uh, as a new agent, there is a lot of things for me to learn and there always is something for us to learn in NDSU Extension because we are educational, uh, institution and so it's our job to get education and then give education, so we're really busy doing that. Uh, some of the great things that you've sent me to training for is, um, I have trained for older adults, uh, the stepping on program is this evidence-based program for fall prevention and falls are just a really, really big deal, a lot of people don't understand how serious falling is or how common it is. One out of every four adults, uh, ages sixty-five or older, uh, fall every year, fifty-two people died in, in North Dakota from falls. Well, and, and, uh, you know, a fall can just change somebody's life, somebody's life, they lose their independence and their whole life trajectory just changes. And so, uh, that's a really big success in our county and I'd say our stepping on program for fall prevention is probably one of the best in the state because we have set up a collaboration with our hospital, with SMC, with Coal Country, with Knife River Care Center. So we've got therapists, nurses and then myself facilitating that and there isn't a team that I know of, there could be in the state. And so we really have that going strong, so I wanna thank you for sending me to training for that. Another thing I did, uh, training, I did some, my training is online too, but one, um, for older adults is Powerful Tools for Caregivers. So really trying to help people, uh, care for their loved ones. It's, it's, we have people in our county that are not getting out because they are caring for loved ones, very hard job. I do have a question, I, I want you to, um, do this on your own time. You know, when I was setting up the class for, uh, Powerful Tools for Caregivers, one of my jobs was to make a resource page and I was looking at our county food pantry and so when I Google, I want you to Google county food pantry on your own time, you know, Mercer County Food Pantry. But I was just kinda, our food pantry is in the Women's Action Resource Center and a lot of our, our men that I have found, uh, kind of asking around, don't feel like they can go there because it's, it's for women in domestic violence and they have no place being there and, um, and that's not true, but what I was gonna say is when you Google the Mercer County, uh, food bank, you get the Women's Action Resource Center page. And it doesn't say Mercer County Food Bank. So I was just kind of wondering if we have any men out there that need, uh, to access their food bank? I wonder if we couldn't try to, uh, find a better profile on that, uh, for our food banks on, on, on the internet? Just a thought, I'm kinda new to that, people that work with that a lot? I'm kind of new to that, people that work with that a lot. Um, I had, um, I'm on a committee, uh, with, um, kind of our healthcare and they didn't even think twice about that, they deal with that and refer people there and it goes smoothly for them, but for me not having any experience, I thought that was a little unusual, so I want you to look, I want you to, um, Google that on your own time, just see. Also, I work a lot with youth, we're doing nutritional programs, I'm going to be in the schools in our county, going to thirteen classrooms, uh, this, uh, spring, uh, second, third, and fourth grade. To do some nutritional programs and I've been doing some babysitting training. We were kind of behind on that, so I did, uh, a ton of babysitting classes, we have a big need, need for that, we, uh, in those classes, we have law enforcement, uh, that come in as guest speakers telling young people the right steps on how to be safe and when to lock up and, uh, how to answer phones, that sort of thing. Had the county nurse come and help with first aid. I had a parent educator come and talk to young people about proper ways to discipline. And, and, um, a little bit about child psychology and, uh, help them deal with young kids. Of course, four H is thirty percent of my job, so, uh, our four H programs, uh, involve a lot of work at fairs. And, um, of course, we do our work in our county fair, I have been at the state fair supporting our kids and other kids in the state, doing, um, programs like clothing review, uh, communication type programs, consumer decision-making, helping out with some of those and, and the static exhibits. I've worked at some other county fairs, we kind of help each other out and collaborate. Um, adult nutrition. I was gonna give you, um, a handout and take an opportunity to do some education quick. How many, uh, cups of fruits and vegetables are we supposed to have as adults? Do you know the answer to that? Every day?
Zero.
He says zero because he does not eating fruits and vegetables. So, uh, three cups of vegetables and two of fruit, a little bit less if you're a woman, a little bit more if you're really active, but anyway. So, uh, adult nutrition is another thing that I do, I don't know if you check out our Facebook, Facebook page from time to time, but I've kind of been on this little circuit of charcuterie classes. Uh, it's been really fun, it's, yes, we're doing some nutrition education in there, but we're having a lot of fun. And, um, on December sixth, you sent me to, um, a workshop in, in Bismarck, um, USDA held through, through the University of Nebraska. And it was disasters, diseases, and decisions. And, uh, it was a lot about, um, safety. You know, wearing respirators when you're going into, um, cleaning out old barns and things like that. But also in there, one thing hit home and that was, every time you do a program, you should do a little bit of mental health with it. And you know, mental health is, is such a concern everywhere. In, in our society, in our state, and in our county, of course. And so, it's pretty hard to have a mental health class though and get people in our county just to raise their hands right and sign up for our mental health. So, um, I'm trying to work in mental health pieces, just five or ten minutes, maybe some, um, self-care, um, stress, you know, breathing techniques, just some ideas on how to, um, live a better life, uh, mental health-wise. And, but in that disasters and diseases, as I said, work that in in every program. So the charcuterie classes, although they're fun, very fun, we do a little bit of nutrition, this still is an outlet to be, bring people together. And then, um, share a little bit about mental health, just a brief five or ten minutes, so I'm trying to address mental health that way. I think I covered most everything, uh, about the Advisory Council, we have a, um, a group of people and, um, we've all reached out to you too and some of you have been to our Advisory Council, so we, we need you to help us assess the needs of our, of the people in our county. Because you also put pieces together from all over the place and I'm sure you're talking to a lot of people. So when you hear concerns, let us know what those things are, agriculturally or socially. Uh, and we can work together, you are invited to be part of our Advisory Council and we've been meeting once a year, uh, last year was in March. And so, um, when that, uh, letter comes to you, that's what that's about. And one other thing, on our narrative, on the bottom, when I report, like how many people I see, I, I feel we're still using a real old model. It, I, I write down on the bottom of my narrative, how many meetings I go to a month and how many phone calls. And nowadays, people are contacting me differently than phone calls, getting, people are reaching out in emails, people are stopping me in the grocery store. People are texting me. In my job at NDSU, we have a required reporting system, it's called PERS. And we have to give, uh, some numbers for direct contacts, like how many people that we see each month that we, um, deliver educational programs to. And those are in the hundreds and sometimes it could be even a thousand in a three-month period. And so I'm wondering if I should change phone calls on the bottom of my narrative to more of a direct contact, like how many people are we talking to, how many people do we see? We also do indirect contacts, it's kind of a, a optional thing for us to, to report on, but indirect contacts would be things like, when I write an article for the paper, how many, uh, people is that touching to? So I think those are maybe a little bit better numbers than, uh, meetings and phone calls, though I'm very happy to keep doing meetings and phone calls and... But I just kind of wondered if you wanted to add maybe some more specific numbers, so you know how far it reaches.
I think it would be nice to have some of that information, I mean, like you said, how many people actually pick up the phone, but I could imagine you getting Facebook messages or text messages for, well, people just stopping, emails, I mean, you know, and how it is, there's fifteen ways to get ahold of somebody.
Yep. I got a, I got a, uh, two Facebook conversations last night on Messenger. Look what I did, I, I made a charcuterie board for my gift for Christmas. I made three of them and I, now I have my husband doing it, so, yeah, it, it's been, been great, so.
If you, if you, if you don't mind, I want to step back, um, when you mentioned, uh, food pantry, I mean, I'm well aware of what work does, I guess I was unaware that they coincided as the Mercer County Food Pantry and I could see, um, how it might be comfortable for a male going in there, knowing that that's for Women Ex, uh, Women's Access Resource Center. Um, is there any other facilities that do it, or is it just the one in Beulah?
Hazen has one.
Hazen has one?
Hazen has one now, and they've changed the name, I understand, and it's a pri, it's a private food pantry, right?
No, they, they changed the name because, yeah, before it wasn't even, it's really, I mean, these two still hold the, they're official, so they have the, the kind of legal side of it.
Oh, I see. And they house it in English Lutheran?
Are we part of both of them, or are we just part of the work side one?
Just the work side one, as our Mercer County Food Pantry, is that how I understand it?
The Hazen Food Pantry is, I don't, I, I don't, I don't know actually as much about work, the Hazen Food Pantry is completely volunteers and it seems to be like a, a completely self, self-contained entity. So that is not associated with the county, certainly doesn't get any county funding or anything like that.
I do think both food pantries do get food from the Great Plains Food Bank?
I know Hazen does.
Okay, and, and Beulah does too. Yeah.
So I guess it, it...
Yeah, I was kind of concerned, like say, say you're, uh, um, an older male in my, my Powerful Tools for Caregivers class, I was just thinking of somebody in this scenario that maybe had, had a health issue and had to quit work early and then their wife has a stroke. You know, things happen to people. And, and does that person know where to reach out?
Was that even an action taken by the commission as to where the food pantry would be located?
I don't think so, but I just, I just think it's, um, and I'm not saying that, like, work should rebrand or anything, but it just should be known that they can, they can, you know, use those services.
I think maybe what, what, what needs to happen, and I, you know, that's really not part, I've kind of got my nose in someone else's business there, I don't mean to do that. But I'm wondering even if it could just have a, a webpage that at least linked you there and then showed a picture and, and, you know, if they have a separate door or something.
And say maybe a separate entry or something like that.
Yeah, yeah. And I think some people that are familiar with going there have no trouble, but some folks, it might catch them in a phase of life where they, they've never used a service like that and it might be, it might be hard to do it in the first place and then that might be even more off-putting. That was my thought.
I guess I've been in there and, um, you know, and I've toured that facility with Gloria and, uh, as far as an entryway, I mean, you can go in there and you wouldn't have to be, you know, you would...
No, you don't.
You're, you're separate, you know, be able to be processed and do your things and get, and go back out. But I do agree with the part about, um, the stigma that goes with it, you know, that, you know, whether, you know, people are gonna go use it or not, you know, and that's the part, portion that I really believe we need to work on, is, you know, we need to do something different in that area.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and they don't, and I mean, work doesn't just limit it to women, I know they've helped a lot of men. A lot of good work.
I just think it's, like I said, the stigma that goes with it, it's not that, it's enforced that way at all, no, but it's just that a lot of it, like, people won't... That's why I said it's a good idea to take and move that forward as that, that idea of maybe a different webpage, different access point. You can still have the same place where you're gonna go, but have a different way to get to it.
And I'm not sure what the signage is, maybe on the outside, it's Mercer County Food Pantry needs to be on there too.
Right, and, because I think it's just work, I don't, I mean, if, that's kind of what I was getting to, is that if that building is dual-purpose, maybe both types of purposes should be listed so that people understand that it's not just for women and it's, it's also the food bank and things like that, so...
I'm, I would believe that probably work and they agreed and/or just volunteered to, house the food bank because of, there is some association between, you know, the...
Yep.
What they do.
Right.
And it's probably a lot of work for them to stock and order and so they have the, the staff to do.
But I mean, their clientele, it kind of probably handshakes using it, having the food pantry also, so it's, it's a convenience, probably both ways there. But yeah, I understand.
Yeah, it makes sense in a lot of ways, but in, but it's, not quite has the right face, I think.
I know, it... I'm gonna go to the Women's Action Resource Center for my, you know, for the, as the food bank, it's probably tough enough for me just to go to wanna get commodities and then also walk in into the Women's Action Resource Center. Yeah, I get it, but I don't have an answer.
No, it's just something we need to work on, so I was just making you aware of it, and the county is paying for it, so I don't really know, I, I haven't done any research on, on, uh, maybe how to change it, I was just bringing it to your attention, I thought it may be interesting, so... Is there anything else you'd like to ask me at all?
Yes, I got one more.
Oh, no.
I've always got questions.
Okay.
You mentioned mental health, five or a ten-minute thing. I feel it's a lot bigger than that.
Oh, it is a lot bigger than that.
I just think that if we're gonna delve into it, let's, let's do more than that, let's, let's go for it.
I'm not sure how, Rick.
I understand that.
I mean, I, we can have a class like mental wellness, real mental wellness. Our people, maybe we should, should, and just see for sure how many people are signing up, but I think a lot of people aren't ready to raise their hand and say, yeah, I need some, you know, in a public, yeah. What were you gonna say?
What I'm saying is, is that we're not gonna, we're not gonna get people to volunteer, it's just that we have to build a program, we have to start from the ground up and, you know, it's like you said, the word is how. Where do we go, where do we get it started, what do we do? Those are the things that we need, maybe we gotta get some, some help, a committee or something that, that advisory board or whatever, people, I've been to the advisory board thing and there's some great people and that thing was some great ideas too. So I mean, there would be a, a good place to get some... The, the big question you said is how.
Well, and also, uh, Vision West, when we talked a little bit about this, uh, Vision West has their annual meeting in Beulah later this month, uh, I think it's the third Thursday, but, um, not quite sure on that, but I know they have a component on, on mental health and they've been doing seminars on that and they actually have, a lot of education on that and they actually have people that are dedicated to the mental health on, on the Vision West side, so, you know, maybe that, another way to pull them in and kind of, uh, piggyback on some other entities.
And we've talked about the collaboration between the clinic and the hospital and you for other programs, right? The whole country's got a big mental health.
So I mean, we've already got just a few questions on how already, we've got, we just gotta, somebody's gotta scare it and start putting it together.
Well, I guess my, my plan of attack a little bit was to have those five or ten-minute things and say, talk to me if you'd like any more resources or, you know. And I could slowly build a community to start having things and as, as things get going, maybe we'll take off a little bit. Yeah, but if we keep that, uh, in our minds as open dialogue, you know, um, another program I did was, um, Design Your Own Succession Plan, Small Business, I did a virtual, uh, uh, sessions of that this fall, but there they say, speak often and speak casually and speak often. And I think that is what has to happen with mental health too. Talk, just keep, keep the dialogue open, so...
And maybe that virtual component is, is key too, because people don't want to come out in public to say, hey, I need help, but maybe virtually it'll be a stepping stone.
And maybe they feel more comfortable just even just listening to it that way and nobody really knowing that they're listening. But at least they would start getting a few skills and some coping mechanisms, so...
Okay, anything else, am I off the hook now?
Alright.
Okay.
You've opened a lot of dialogue to this one, so...
Ah, good. Uh, yeah, and I, I hope to maybe, maybe come a few more times a year now, that I've kind of got my feet wet and established a little bit. Letting know if there's anything else.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please reach out if you see any concerns in the county.
Right, thank you, Metta.
Okay. We're gonna recess for five minutes. It's ten oh five now, we'll reconvene. Well, go by that one up there.
Did he say five or ten minutes? Did he say recess for five or ten? Five, good, gone. Hi, Chris?
How are you?
Good, good. Shubhan, I, I, you didn't have any handouts to leave, okay, good.
I brought one.
You did, okay, good.
Because I was pretty small on big folder. And a big sheet.
Yes, ten o'clock. Five minutes. What's that? Uh, what, can you read my... Okay, they already did, state mileage. Right?
They're just gonna give you enough for information.
Okay, and thanks, Candy. Oh, yeah, love it, love it. Everything.
Yeah. So that's the same, uh, that we talked about? Nothing changed? Everyone's able to hold everything.
Did we ever hear back from that?
The drones?
Yeah.
Jim, I'm just talking about...
I did. And then when they, I know one time they... I did, and then when they, I know one time they did something and I sent it to you.
And we sent it?
Can you do that and then I'll find out? Yeah, okay. Yeah, sending the information now.
But we'll see what qualifies.
So this?
Yeah, so.
Right now, this is fine. Yes, yes, okay, sounds good.
Okay, it's 10:10, we'll reconvene. Landfill capping project, Sherwin Wanner.
We've got court facilities there.
What did I say? Oh, I already checked that one off, we're done with you.
Sounds good, it's all approved, right?
Sorry, sorry, court facilities.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm back. Everything is wrapping up with the first phase. Everything is, I don't think that there's just a few little punchless items left. Sounds like Jim's getting familiar with everything. Nothing major to report on that. We, you did approve the chiller project as a phase two, change order for the project. And I am happy to report that the chillers are in Bismarck, they are waiting to be installed. And it sounds like in the next couple of weeks, the service crews from City Year Mechanical are freeing up and need some work with this warmer weather, they haven't been as busy. So they're gonna come start demo of the old chillers, set the new chillers and then we can start piping and getting everything ready for the summer. So I'm expecting by the time you need them in the spring, late spring, they'll be ready to go. So nothing, no holdups with that. So that's really good news. What you have in front of you is items we've talked about before, before the budgeting process. And it is the boiler project and the remainder of the lighting. And that part would include like this room, for example, getting these to LED. I can see like, there's a lot of shadows in here right now, let's, let's get rid of that, let's, let's make it clearer. Actually have some, some brighter lights and easier to see things. I do have a list if anyone wants to look at it, sometimes a lot of information, but Jim has approved the list, looked at it. Any issues you see with that, Jim? It includes all the way, kind of this whole side of the building, which we did not do before, and then all the way out to the shop. So even some outdoor lights, things of that nature, so. But yeah, what you have in front of you, the, is my normal big sheets, easier to read. Every, everyone has been able to hold their pricing since the last time we talked, so there's no surprises, no increases. Boilers could be here in, right around, I'd say about 10 to 12 weeks. We're looking at for a lead time on the boilers. So that would be perfect for, once you do not need those anymore in the summertime. We take out those old boilers and put the new one in. It'll be a little tricky with the water heater portion, because you'll always need that water heater for the jail. But we'll, we'll find ways to make it work, so we don't have to shut things down too much or just do it very limited. Get everything ready, do a quick switch, kind of thing, so.
So everything so far is coming in?
Right on schedule, just like we anticipated before budgeting. There's no price increases since then. Everyone's able to hold everything, which is great. That usually does not happen, so I, I'm gonna take it when I can, so.
But we'd have to give them authorization to go forward with the boilers.
Yep, yep. It would just be approving this last.
That was part of the original.
No, it wasn't part of the original. It's separate. We, we had put it in the budget for 24, because it was basically our requested change order.
Yep.
Okay, I don't remember.
Yeah, so, so the way it worked was actually.
I thought there was something with the chillers.
Yep.
That we were.
Yep, so, so the items in gray on the sheet, I know it's kind of faint, but the original project was CFS three, CFS four C, four D, four E, and five D. And then by change order, the seats attorney said you could do that. You added two A, which is the chiller replacement. And then that was because the chiller, one of the chillers crashed and parts were next to impossible to get. And then right before budgeting, we talked about adding the, the ones in green, CFS one A and five D. And doing that again by change order to the existing project, so. So that's what's before you is, is the sheet you have, items in green. The total, excuse me, total to that would be 590, 867 and 51 cents. Which is still the same as we talked about before budgeting time.
Okay, just so I understand again, Travis, we did budget that, you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
We had part of it for 23 and part of it, boilers were for 24 is what we put in for the budget.
Okay.
Boilers were 23, yeah.
Okay, so then we need a motion to approve this, is it one A and five D?
Yep.
Correct.
Do we wanna do them separate or?
I think we can do them together. I'll move to go forward with the CFS one A and CFS five D. One A is the heating system, also known as the boiler system. And five D is the lighting to LED conversion for the courthouse.
Any further discussion?
I got one question, I don't know if it's a place to add it or not, but with this lighting and stuff that you're working in here, just, I don't even know if this fits in this conversation.
That's okay.
That thing over there, when we start talking lighting and stuff and we're working in that, I, I can't read that thing, I don't know how people.
Or the board.
Yeah, and the lighting and stuff with that, is that part of this project too or?
The board is not. But let me do some checking on that, and you do have a contingency in here, in with this, so I can see what it would be. And I don't think, I mean, that's really.
Not a big item, but I think it'd be a lot, it's been brought up in last, in this past year a couple of times though. You know, people, I, I had a couple of people bring, I shouldn't say I, we have.
That is hard to read.
They've mentioned that thing and it's like.
I know, sitting back there, I couldn't read it, to be honest, so.
I just was wondering if there's, you know, like you said, ideas, maybe there's some other.
Let me, let me do some checking and then we can use your existing contingency dollars that you've already approved. You, if you don't use them, you get them back, so we can look at it and we can let you know.
Yeah, just, I mean, I can take outside the box and look at some house or whatever.
Absolutely, I'll dig into some solutions, that's a great question. That's what that contingency is for. You know, while we have an electrician in here, things like that, to do, look at some of those upgrades, so.
Okay, is there any other further discussion?
On the lighting, is there, are you looking at any grants for?
Yes, Carmen and I just talked about that. So we haven't heard a status update from Department of Commerce on the existing grant application that you applied for. Everything was written, Carmen submitted it, they had some questions for us, we answered those pretty promptly, I know it was over a couple of weeks they had questions. And then we haven't heard anything on the status, so what happens with that is as that fund gets funded into the state, they take the applications first come, first served. The applications that are already in and approved stay in the queue and then they release the money as they get it. So I'm guessing you're in the queue, I just don't know where that's at and when things get funded. So Carmen and I are gonna contact Bruce Hagan with Department of Commerce and just see where things are today. And then you can reapply for this next portion, we'll do all the calculations. I never try to anticipate too much what we're gonna, what's gonna qualify, because I don't know what you're gonna approve or not approve. So we'll send in a new application for this part of the project, the amount that qualifies and, and see what they approve.
And switching over to LED lights actually is a significant saving for us as far as like our electric bill and all that.
Yep.
Type of thing as well too, so to like come out over time too.
Oh yeah, definitely, yep. If you look in that green line where it says lighting LED conversion courthouse, if you follow that over, the estimated operational savings per year are $750 and the estimated annual energy savings is $2,200. So yes, over time, you know, I, I like to do hard measurements after everything's installed. We do before and after, so then we get a, a good idea of what it's gonna be. Right now it's just calculations, but yeah, definitely you're gonna see some energy savings from, from that, so. And just the overall light quality, the vision.
I'd say it just helps with health.
Yeah, yeah, overall health, yeah, yeah, I was talking about health of it, light has a big part of it. Temperature has a big part of it, so they all play together, so. They can even do things now where you can change the light color by a wall switch. So if you've got a big crowd in here and you want a more calming light ambiance, you can change that. We didn't, we didn't include that, but we can if you want and, yeah.
That button goes to the chair?
Yeah, right, right. We'll put the switch right up there on the desk, yeah.
I was gonna pick on Rick and say, maybe we need some calming light for Rick.
I already got that.
No, not reflective light.
I was gonna add too though, just for the people in the, in the audience, it's like with Liza's statement too on payback and Chris had mentioned too is that just this LED lighting in here for your information out there is that in about 3.7 years, these things will pay for itself, so.
Yes, with, you know, with everything included and including, you know, what we, the lifespan of the existing lights and everything else, it's got a great payback, so.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Harry Nunn, Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gina will vote aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We'll get started right away and we'll send out the change order and get things rolling.
We, we can move on, Sherwin's here and. I didn't check that one off, I'm not ahead of myself now.
You just moved it to consent agenda?
Okay, landfill capping project, Sherwin.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you for the time. Since the last time I was in front of the commission in December, we have moved forward and I put together draft contract documents and started looking at bidding dates and I want potentially we can try and move forward. And I did develop a preliminary cost estimate, what the project might be, so I'll try and present that today and talk about maybe some alternatives that we're still looking at with the state in terms of the topsoil seeding to hopefully try and alleviate some of the topsoil concerns and the costs associated with that borrowed material, so. I guess first of all, I'll probably throw the numbers out first and then I can have a, go from there. Prelimarily, looking at total costs with the, using the traditional topsoil borrow that we would have to go get, which is probably fairly expensive, I think, cause we'd have to borrow from the alfalfa field to the north and then reseed that as well, so it does increase the cost for our seed and everything. At that, at that point, so probably on the high side, looking at about $286,000 in construction cost. And then when you add on the testing and things like that, that's my estimate is close to $328,000 for that project. And that provides a, around a 2.65 acre cover project for the landfill.
What was that final number?
I, my opinion of cost is total, with all the testing and everything, about $329,000.
For, this is for the quadrant or for how?
For approximately 2.65 acres of landfill cover.
Quadrants like, just the one or was there more, there was more than what we talked about?
Well, for, through the life of the landfill, there's actually 10 cells planned.
We're talking about capping, what, two of them wasn't it?
Well, it's portion of.
Cause they gotta blend in or whatever.
Yeah, they blend in.
As it goes up, you just reclaim once it gets to elevation.
Yeah, so it's portions of cells, three, four and five.
Okay, yeah, there was portions of each.
Portions of. Now we are, like you mentioned, we're still looking at a, the topsoil amendment product that's been used in western North Dakota and throughout the United States, but particularly it's been used in western North Dakota successfully. I sent information to the state to get their opinion on it, so I'm still in discussions. They're reviewing some of the technical data. That product, cost wise, may provide an alternative for the topsoil portion of it. And depending on, and I did get cost of that product, it's about $15,000 in the acre to apply that. But it still might provide the contractor some savings because of the ease of application and the fact that they wouldn't have to reseed a mono area as well. You know, depending on approval from the state in that regard and through bidding, potentially we could see some savings with that. But that's still, that would require state approval and we're still working on that portion of it.
Do we have an account that's for capping? We do it all?
The operational fund, you guys were, we've been putting under maybe a thousand in the payment contractors last year and this year. And then the operational fund is about 260 some thousand in a great amount, roughly.
You know where my next question was gonna be, so do we, how much of this 329 would we have available?
Hopefully with the hundred eighty thousand we have in there and the 260, because we can use, we can use the operational fund money. And then after this project, then we need to keep building that back up again.
Okay.
Where's that 91,000 fit in, that's always on the, in the budget there on that too?
There's one that you can't touch.
That's the one.
Cause you have to have it for, if we have to shut it down, you have to have it there.
Similar to mining, you'd have to, essentially your bond, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if my question had anything to do with what you're telling us, but right away the dollars are roaming in my head. I don't know if my question had anything to do with what you're telling us, but right away the dollars are roaming in my head. Sorry.
Legitimate question and I just want everyone to know that my crystal balls, we usually cloudy on in terms of what a contractor's gonna bid too. So that's my best guess at this point.
Um, do you need us to approve anything as far as going out for bid or?
Well, what I do, um, in terms of the packet itself, I do need, right, I would like to get at least a county review on it so I can send that to a proper person that would wanna look at, make sure that dispute resolution language, we follow standard EJ CDC contract documents. Uh, but the county would want to, usually it's the county attorney that would wanna verify um whether it's mediation arbitration, county preference on that. Uh, and then make sure that the insurance requirements that we have in, in the documents is suitable for the county. And then the question that I would have for you today is, I feel like we could be ready to bid this project probably at your, I believe, uh, February seventh commission meeting. By law, we do have to advertise for twenty-one days prior to that. Uh, so I would be looking at potentially advertising, putting an ad out around that January tenth, eleventh or twelfth period.
So you need us to approve, yeah, we, we need that in the calendar.
Yeah, I was just gonna pull up my own.
Yeah, um, but essentially we'd have to approve the plans and specs for, um, for bidding. Um, and then what, you said the February?
We got February seventh is our first meeting and February twenty-first is the second.
Okay.
So you'd need approval today for?
I think what I would be, what I'm asking for today is approval to move forward. And if we're ready and if we get approval from the state to advertise for bids in January for a February bid opening.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll move to approve the bid letting for February seventh at ten thirty.
Ten thirty right away, okay?
Yup.
I'm running out of space here. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing nun, Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie stepped out.
Yes, she did.
Uh, I'll vote aye, so that motion passed, so go ahead and advertise your bids.
Great, thank you. Um, and one quick other update, um, we did complete and we submitted the annual groundwater reporting to the state. Uh, that was submitted electronically in December. Um, there was no, no hits or items of concern in that data that was collected through the air. So hopefully, hopefully it's uh just a completed report at this time.
Uh, one quick thing before you leave Sherwin, um, after we would, you know, if we approve bids in February and we do this closing project, um, based on our current fill in the, in the landfill, how long until we would have another project?
Through the permitting, you know, the best projections that we made in the process, we kinda anticipated that there would be a partial cover project about every five years.
Okay.
And, you know, the advantage of doing partial cover projects is that you, you know, reduce that amount of open area that's at the landfill, because the, the amount of open area, one, it's a permit requirement and then two, it also is an area that you have to provide financial assurance on. So if you can close portions of it, then that reduces the amount of financial assurance that you need to keep.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanna, you know.
So that we know that we keep up with this and make sure that we're keeping it funded for.
That's what I was gonna say, it's a good plan for funding so we get ready now, starting, you know, so we're prepared.
Yeah, so you're looking at three to five years.
Yeah, in the way we set up the permit planning, and again, it's a cloudy crystal ball.
Yup.
It depends on the amount of inflow, but we tried to anticipate a cover project about every three to five years.
And how much did we budget this year approximately?
I'd say I think it stays a hundred and eighty pretty much, hasn't it?
Yeah, so if we do that, we should be pretty good.
And that's just a budget, but like if we have a slow year, it extends that, but it gives us less, I mean, there's, it's a.
What I'm getting at is that we're not putting ten thousand into a, uh, in, uh, an account that possibly we're gonna need five hundred thousand for in three to five years, so.
Yeah, just trying to make sure that we're. For the next few times.
Has anybody ever tried to get rid of topsoil? Get rid of topsoil?
Well, actually, I mean.
I mean, if. I know. More than he has.
Well, the requirement is that there'd be six inches of topsoil over that, you know, two point six acres. Uh, so it's uh, you know, we got two, I think twenty, two thousand four hundred cubic yards, I think, is what my numbers show, just for this cover.
So a couple hundred loads, yeah. But what I, what I'm getting at is like, if a city has a new subdivision or a county subdivision and they have excess topsoil, we should advertise that we're more than willing to take that off their hands, no charge.
Good luck.
You know what, but I mean, I'm just saying, uh, you know.
See, that's like in the permit, that field, that alfalfa field, it's got many feet on one end of it that is topsoil.
Right.
But it's just gonna be the cost that you rip part of it off of there and then it's gonna have to get reseeded.
But I'm, I'm just kinda like, you know, how to generate something and minimize and.
I think the, in terms of topsoil, in terms of the planning of the topsoils, to make sure that this is one cover project. But really the landfill is less than half utilized at this time, so we gotta make sure there's topsoil for a final closure.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty years from now too, so it's trying to manage it now to make sure there's something for the future too.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Sherwin?
Nope, I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Candy? I've got a question for you.
I get it by PDF.
So we got landfill, so. Put you on the spot. Is there, give me an, give a, give me an idea as to what we can do about the debris that goes out on the highway after a mud event, rain or a lot of moisture? Cause there are, some of the garbage trucks leave the landfill and there are chunks of mud on that road that.
I know.
If you drive, I, I'm, a Camaro, you are not gonna drive over that stuff. If you hit that at fifty-five miles an hour, you're taking something out. So is there, is there something we can do? Here, I'll just throw, what my wild thought is that we set up like a wash basin and if you're gonna haul garbage out there on a muddy day, you're gonna have to wash your um undercarriage, especially your wheels off and we'll charge an extra, whatever, extra five dollars per load or something before you go out on the, on the road, or we're gonna have to charge these pe, these entities extra for you to go out there and clean up this mud off the road.
We can go out with the loader and we can get as much off as a blade can because it's kind of the loader too, if it's muddy, and it'll drag out even more mud. And I'm worried about damaging the pavement with the loader, because there's no give to it. You know, but I mean, if there's bigger chunks, we try and go get them off.
Yeah, because it wasn't just recently again, and you, we get these kind of weather days where it gets to forty-five degrees today and big chunks are out on that road, well, they freeze tonight. Oh my gosh, it, it's not pretty. So, I'm not, I'm asked, and I'm not.
And even make a couple of loops around the office and kicker dump and try to spin it off of there inside of the facility.
Put about more, a little more scoria out there or something that you can drive around rather than.
They'll just drag that out there too, it's in between the wheels, it's in between the back wheels.
Massive.
It just gets backed in there and that clay, it takes some speed to get it to come out of there.
Yeah, it'll be a half a mile each way is.
And it dapes up once it get going.
Something we.
You tracked a removal apparatus essentially.
See, I guess in the summertime we could probably use a vertical or the pressure washer, but yeah, the lid.
Cause I even wildly thought about if we had a, like a grading system where they drive over and they gotta wash it down and then you're able to scoop it out with the, with the loader, but, or even if it's on a flat surface where you're able to scoop their mud up after they leave with the loader, but we can't have these trucks going out, we're gonna have to come up. And I know the people hauling the garbage probably won't be happy, but oh my word.
I mean, they could dig some of it out if I am.
Like I said, some of them aren't gonna be happy, but. No, I really appreciate the work you do out there, that's for sure. We're gonna miss Candy when she leaves, but yeah, I think we, something to think about, I know we can't, we can't fix it today, but let's come up with something.
When it comes in the summertime, we can try that, see if we can make something to dig it out and wash down the, the back wheels because that's where it's all coming from and get enough of that out. But if we're muddy coming in there too.
Yup.
You know, if we're muddy going around the office, then.
They'll just add it in that spot then instead.
Yeah, and then if you had scoria to do it, like clay that's in there, it's just gonna pack that scoria and let us really have to get it out, just like.
I guess I was thinking, I'm, I'm, I haven't, like I said, I was gonna come out and visit with you, but I haven't. I was just thinking if you had a scoria. I was just thinking on scoria, I'm, we're, instead of driving on mud, we could be driving on scoria.
No, we're not putting scoria out with the garbage, we're getting it when they're going off to the garbage. I mean, there are days I'd like to shut it down on a wet like that because if they get stuck and we don't pull, I mean, it jams or wrecking stuff and it's just whatever, but you can't always do that.
And that was gonna be my next question suggestion is, what if we tell them you can't bring garbage in? Well, you can, but you're cleaning that, your vehicle off before you're hitting out on the highway.
Well, I guess we can set any rules up we want, but, and it wouldn't be to just dig it out in between the wheels, but sometimes, you know, all the holes are on the outside of the rim, it's oozing out, and it's acting or.
Yeah, that's.
And we had to, well, unless you had to go really, really slow and get, well, we don't want that either, we'll just have to pick the garbage going that road by rosses and fly down that road.
Well, I know there are many days, uh, on the wet, I don't drive in the westbound lane, I drive in the eastbound lane going west because it's, I, with the pickup, I'm not even hitting that stuff, it's, it's unbelievable.
I agree, it's not good.
And like I said, I'm not blaming you, I'm just asking you, let's, let's try and work on a, some kind of solution.
Like a blade and throw it off to the side, but that's not always available.
Well, then you're gonna.
They're coming by there, they knew it.
You're gonna be out there, you don't have a blade.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, you're gonna be out there all afternoon with a blade then.
We have a road department that's got a few blades, so.
Unless we, I don't know, if we can make something else that we could, I don't know.
Well, for now, I would say, I think on those event days, we're gonna have to have the road department come out there and make a pass real quick, cause wow.
Yeah, I mean, we can go with the loader, but like I said, if it's muddy, I'm dragging home mud onto my wheels.
Oh, I know, I don't want you out there with your.
I'm scared of, if I go out there, you guys aren't gonna be happy with me either, so I could get it down there, but.
Oh, so you make one more person upset.
No, it's my life. But we can try to work on something.
Yeah.
Actually, maybe once it burns up here with our muddy, maybe I'll pull one of them to the side and we'll see, we'll try and dig them off to see what we can come up with.
Okay, yeah.
Well, then, I mean, right now it grounds frozen, so we're gonna have to spray it again probably.
Okay, alright.
But we'll work, we'll try to come up with something.
Thank you.
Or if I rise, I'll call my unit and call my unit manager and ask if they can please do a drive-by.
Yeah, we might have, well, I'm, I'm out on that road almost every day, so I could also call them, so it's not just you, but alright. Thank you, Candy.
Candy, since you're up here. Well, she had given me some stuff, Candy, do you wanna just discuss it while you're up here?
Well, I guess we can, but I'm gonna have to get a probably a second opinion. I didn't think it was gonna be that much funny, I, I had somebody give me an estimate on putting up a fence back in the MSW on the west side and the north side to try stop some of the garbage that way from going, we're gonna put up a better temporary fence on like south side this summer to try, because we got tagged on it, she's got the inspection, we got tagged, well, we got tagged for the garbage in the field across, which we cleaned most of that up and we did a bunch of other stuff, cleaning it up and it's all we can do. I mean, he came right after we had all that rain and mud and then a forty mile an hour weather better and I'm like, really? Whatever, I go the whole place and it's, it's a shit show, the whole thing is, it's bad. But go ahead and write it up because I can't, we can't fix it until it dries up some. And we still have more to do, but we're, we did get a bunch of it done, so, and I did send it through, I just still missed sending the letter. But Brad said it looked way, way better after I sent him the pictures and when he was there, because it was bad.
Yeah.
And that's not normal for us, to be that bad.
No.
But the weather really, really got us.
Okay, anything else for Candy?
So you said you're gonna get a second estimate, though Candy?
Yeah, I think I need to, I don't know, that just seems high, because I'm just playing the poles there, we have the poles from the fence we took down before and stuff and, I don't know, I'm kinda cheap and I just, even half of that would be too high, I think.
Uh, thrifty, you're thrifty.
Be responsible with your money Candy, we appreciate it.
So we're gonna see here, maybe I can cut the fence down some and out, but I want a second opinion.
Okay, thank you Candy.
Alright. Happy New Year, my life.
You too.
It's gonna be a good one.
It's starting out good so far.
Okay, HR position.
Yeah, I don't know if everybody, everybody get a chance to look over what I handed out at the last meeting or not?
And I did make copies.
Thank you, Carmen, I appreciate that. So I was just looking at if anybody had any changes that they would rather have to it and then we have to come up with our exes for the course. But I just didn't know if anybody had anything that they felt should be adjusted or changed.
I don't have any. Okay, any, anything else on?
Just.
That item?
Yeah, I just, we need to fill in our, our exes so that we could maybe get this out and hopefully get some applications in and start working toward it.
So who is posting these?
It's like Tonya would, our HR person that we have right now, should be Tonya.
Is posting it in the newspaper in Dollar Save Room.
That's my understanding.
She has all the information.
But for a position like this, you know, maybe like Indeed or some of those other resources, I mean, our, our minimum requirements are to put it in the paper and stuff like that, but um if you want more qualified applicants, you kinda need to broaden your, your search. your search criteria.
So, you know, applications and completed job description with required qualifications can be obtained on the county website at so we just need to put the county website in there, correct? Or from the county auditor's office?
Does Tanya have access to our website?
Probably not.
Well, all she has to do is communicate with us and, you know, I give her access to the newspaper, whatever she needs.
Are we talking about the same subject we talked about yesterday with how we're handling?
Yeah. And and you gotta remember, we literally just started working with her.
Well, my question was we've got two different things here. One, we're looking at a job description and then we're looking at uh something else that we were talking about yesterday and I I didn't wanna intermix the two of them right now. I was looking at the more of what we wanna do as a job description. The other thing, we're talking about the operational side of how we how you know, how we're gonna get to what we need to do right now.
The postings out and in. Yeah.
Yeah, I think those are two different topics.
Okay, then let's fill in our X's and then we'll go back to the operational side because I think that's where we're filling in to put it on the county website, but if Tanya doesn't have access to post it on our website, we need to make sure that the auditor's office is willing to help put it on the county's website.
Yeah, that's what I said. To me, it's two different subjects.
Right, let me see if I can even get close to wording this right. Right now, the person we have contracted to do our HR is a contractor.
Correct.
So allowing them access, we have, in my opinion, we have to be very careful. Um, as my understanding, most of this is done through the auditor's office the way it is, the way it has been. So do how much access do we wanna allow a contractor?
I don't, but then I think we need to make it clear that we are asking the auditor's office to post this stuff.
Okay.
To help with this stuff and if.
And all Tanya has to do is.
And that's how I feel it should be. Um, the contractor can contact the auditor's office and then I think the auditor's office should act on it and and unless it's something that's the auditor feels is completely um, shall I say illegal, then they can the auditor's office could stop it and then address it to the commission.
But back to not mixing the topics like Rick had wanted. We've had departments that are wanting job descriptions posted and there's no clear way as to who is doing it or how it's being done. And that's been the confusion with department heads and this is several different department heads having the issue. So we can say we wanna post it on the county's website or the auditor's office, but if if Tanya, as our contractor, doesn't have access to the website and our website is run by the auditor's office, the auditor's office needs to be aware to do that.
Yes.
And be willing to do that.
I don't disagree with that.
So so clearing it up.
Okay, first, so we the first thing here is you're you're asking about this job description if we have any questions on it.
Right, and the job description, everybody said they were okay with, correct? The job description.
And I and I guess. Any opposition?
The two words that are most important that I that I see for for is assistant advised, you know?
Right.
You know, that's what this is all about.
Yes.
Not not totally running the things. That's what that's why I said we're we're kinda in a in a learning area here, so it's like, you know, we need to deal with this description, get this done, then we can deal with the operational side of it.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the joint resource job description that we have in front of that was presented by Tanya.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion or questions on the job description? Hearing none, Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jeanne, aye. Okay, now the next item would be
The posting.
The posting.
Correct.
I I hope I'm not the odd odd one here, but I think our um what's her name again?
Tanya.
Tanya. I think Tanya should contact our auditor's office and our auditor should do the actual posting. That's just I I don't know why I feel that way, but I if if and when we have a full-time HR employed by the county,
That's separate.
then they can do it, but I think this has to be considered a contractor and I think that's that anyway, that's how I feel and.
Okay, so my one question is, so the first X's we can fill in just by the county's website, correct?
Yep.
Then the second one is please submit completed applications and resumes to. Do we want the resumes, though, to go to Tanya? Or do we want them to go to the auditor's office?
Where are you on here?
Last page, last sentence or second line.
There's a bunch of X's.
So again, going back to who do we?
Oh, sorry.
When we when we uh normally if we who hires that person? I mean, if we were
We would.
We would have to do it again. So how do we? I guess you're asking then who do we want?
Cuz normally it would go to the HR person. The HR person would compile those um resumes and then would set up the interviews. And then we would have a date or time and we would interview those individuals and make our recommendation.
We're looking at how.
Normally it'd go to the HR personnel. So in this case, I think we could do this two ways. I think we could have it go to Liza or we could have it go to the auditor's office cuz you're the portfolio holder for the HR.
Currently, yes, unless that changes when we redo our thing.
Okay, so then I mean reword my statement. So the it could go to the portfolio holder of the HR person or it could go to the auditor or the commission.
And I didn't know because she's our acting HR if it would go to Tanya cuz she's our acting HR or not either.
Oh.
So I wanna throw that little loop in for you too.
That's the hard part about being a contractor, though. Somebody applying for job unless they're doing online, they're not gonna, you know, if you're gonna do a uh an application, they wanna turn it in somewhere. You gotta turn, you know, you gotta be able to physically turn something in.
Well, I yeah, I think it should go to our HR, but I think the portfolio holder should be in close contact with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that should it. I know you don't wanna you don't wanna tell them they have to turn in too, but I think we need to.
My only concern is I didn't want people to turn it in into me cuz I'm gonna make part of the decision on who it's gonna be. So I wanted to kinda stay out of that. I mean, I don't mind knowing that we have some coming in or anything, but I think it should be the HR person who lines up the interviews and does all that cuz I don't wanna be skewed in any way for whomever we decide to hire is my concern with that one. Because I'm gonna do would be part of the hiring for that person. So I don't I don't wanna if they turn it into me like in a manila envelope and I get it over to Tanya, but I just don't wanna be given any preference or anything like that or being seen as I might do something like that.
As long as Tanya is not one that's gonna apply for it. Okay, I yeah.
So to me, it would be cleaner to just have it sent to Tanya.
Yeah, I think so.
Than to have it go through somebody just to make sure that it's not skewed or anything.
But do we need to have a dropping point here if they wanna drop off of this?
Right.
And then send everything to to her?
Right.
Okay, I'm okay. We have a dropping point where we we choose the auditor's office. That would be the place, but I I don't know if that's where we however we we decide to do it. Then all those things should go to her screen, went through, whatever she needs to do, then we can do us.
Then she would line up the interviews with us and then it would be to be cleared that way.
I just wanna make sure. Online, she would have access, but you know, not everybody.
Personally can do one, correct?
We gotta have some some message to make that work.
So then Carmen, you would just need to let me know if one gets dropped off and then I could make sure it gets to Tanya.
Or we could send it to her.
Yeah.
We could scan it and email it to her.
Okay.
Would that be? I mean, we'd make sure that she got it cuz I absolutely agree. She needs to do that. She's helping you guys do this.
Right.
And I want it to. And the other thing, okay, so you are allowing the auditor's office then to post job descriptions that Tanya tells us to
Correct.
on the website. That's what you want us to do. Okay, good.
Yes.
We got no problems with that.
We just need to get clarifications on operation, how we wanna do it, and I don't think that anybody was really trying to.
And we're learning.
Yes. You know, we just need to.
Department can. But this is an anomaly, so.
But they need to contact Tanya and talk to her and how she wants you to proceed. That's and that's what we're getting used to. Let's say that we just started this.
Right.
As far as I know, it's only been two departments that have been using it. Is there another department, Jamie?
Nope, just two.
Okay, there's two and and I'm assuming the one got resolved cuz we had our meeting yesterday.
I think so. You know, I just think that, you know, she's gonna assist and advise that the department head that once you get that done, give it to you and we'll do our own our own manual way we did things or hardly you wanna do.
Tanya helping you guys.
Not manual, but.
And so we got the county website. That fills in your first set of X's.
Yeah.
Okay. Please submit resume to Tanya Wheeler or however.
I think we should put her name, phone number, email.
Yep.
Con to Tanya Wheeler, contact information, whatever whatever you put there. And then application deadline.
Yep.
We need that one here.
Right.
How long do you wanna run it? Thirty days? Two weeks?
I think thirty days is smarter. Just because we have this different process too and making sure that we get everything rolling and stuff like that. In my own opinion.
So that would be.
It'd be uh well, February second would be a Friday. It's otherwise the week after maybe.
Like February? Seventh or ninth? Seventh would be the.
That's the twenty twenty-three calendar, Jamie?
Yeah.
I know. I'm looking. You just move them all over a day.
Right.
The seventh would be a Wednesday.
Correct.
When could Tanya get this in the paper?
So that'd be the first uh meeting in for the commission in February. Or we just make it February ninth, which is Friday.
February ninth cuz that would give us more time. I'd say February ninth would be more feasible by the time Tanya gets these few changes in and then gets.
And then gets it to the paper and and the website.
Yeah. Yeah, so February ninth, right?
Okay. Okay, so then we're gonna post that to I I don't.
Liza will communicate to Tanya these changes and then Tanya can pass them on to Carmen.
And then we'll.
Get that put in the paper and.
So we need a motion for this?
Probably would be best.
So what? Ask for a motion that we for this HR director that the oops, I've gotta move up. That'd be posted on the county website. Wait a minute, that yeah, well.
Yep.
And it has.
Yep.
Yeah, you got it.
Okay. And qualifications required can be obtained at the county website. That the completed application gets sent to contact Tanya Wheeler and will someone will contact Tanya to find out how she wants to receive it.
Yeah, I will.
Okay, Liza?
Yeah.
And the application deadline will be February ninth.
Twenty twenty-four.
Did you get that?
Oh, my.
Proposed motion. I didn't make the motion.
She'd make that motion.
Okay, Jamie made that motion.
And I'll second it.
Okay, do we want her to read back the motion?
Do you want me to?
Yes, please.
Okay, motion to our motion for the HR director to oh, no, the HR description to be put up on the county website. And the completed applications received will go to Tanya. Liza's gonna let Tanya know all of these changes and the application deadline is February ninth. Jamie made the motion. Liza's second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Jamie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jeanne, aye. Okay, we can move forward with that. Eleven o'clock. Oh, second reading of the special assessment district ordinance.
So I gave you guys all a copy of that and the highlighted the very small changes that were made were highlighted in yellow and on the last page was the um that additional the last additional and then plus I.
You made the changes in accordance with the century code? Is that what you're?
I made the changes in accordance to the commission amendment on December sixth.
Okay.
Um, the state's attorney has looked at it and he okayed it. I think he's here. But he did okay this and I did highlight the changes, the additions and and it was a seventy to sixty. And then on the last page, the Mercer County Commission reserves the right to define the voting procedure on a district by district basis. And then besides that, I attached a copy of what Bill Galvin had sent in, which I emailed out to everybody. And then at the end of this, I had received some more information, starting with this state's attorney's letter and back from another resident, which is basically history. So I just thought you should have that to see it and I I just got that like yesterday. But he doesn't wish to, you know, say his name. It's just history from nineteen ninety-two that was on this road that basically states that it is a county's roadway. And it came from our state's attorney. That any maintenance repairs of this roadway or any other constructions that may affect the road or right of ways must be undertaken by the county and not individual landowners.
But all we're addressing today is the procedure for a special.
The procedure.
Not not any specific one.
Yeah, not anything to do with, right, just procedure for a special assessment district. Anybody got any questions? Anybody?
It cuz it's it's just a second reading. It's not a public hearing, right? I mean, this is just a reading.
So it'd be just the only way I could word this would be if there'd be any concerns about uh verbiage or or wording of the special assessment district ordinance. If any anyone feels there should be any changes. Okay, go ahead.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I'm glad we're focusing on the special assessment too and not on the road. I think in the future, we need to have one on the road specifically, but for now, just a special assessment. Um, just to start out with, this is McKenzie County's special assessment procedure. They don't call it an ordinance. So one that you guys started with that's been marked up. They have not implemented this. I called Erica. I called Erica Snowden, I think it is. Pardon?
Jonesrud.
Songrud.
It's her maiden name, I guess.
I also called Oliver County, talked to them and said, how do you do special assessments? They said, well, we use the century code. So to that end, the special, the special assessments that are in, they give authority to the county to do special assessment is outlined in the century code specifically. And it's specific around two items. One is how do you get the petition? That's sixty percent. You guys, I guess, changed that last time.
Yeah, it would be sixty percent now.
Correct. And the second part is the protest procedure, which is the majority of the area owners, land, landowners. And that's fifty percent plus one majority. And that's explicit in the century code in, in a number of different cases. It doesn't really matter whether you're a home rural county or, or a non-home rural county. Those two principles apply. So I guess I gotta back up and say, why, why are we doing this? Why do we have a special assessment procedure when you have the authority and the procedure outlined in the century code? It doesn't appear that this document is even necessary. But it doesn't preclude you from doing one. If you want to do a special assessment that mimics the century code, have at it. But if.
To answer your question, I'm not going to be able to answer it totally, but the guy that should be answering that question isn't sitting here. He's the one that's guided us through this thing and why we've done the things we've done is because of, we felt that they were handled the way that the state's attorney directed us on this.
I wish he was here.
I do too.
I guess I was under the impression that McKenzie County's is in place.
Yeah.
That's when this all started, I was under the impression that that was in place.
It, it is on their books. It is in place. They've just never implemented it. Never adopted and implemented. That's what.
Because I believe this question was asked once before. I think you even asked us before, why we did this. And he answered it, but I can't answer you how he answered it, but I think this conversation was had prior to this.
So pretty much everything that's, it would be in our special assessment ordinance is as per state century code. Other than item number ten, you say is fifty percent.
Item number ten, and then I think you need some clarification around twenty-three also, because I don't know, this kind of just says pretty much we can do whatever we want later on, you know? And I, I don't think that's valid, you know, maybe with the exception, you know, I know you were talking about, you know, if you have a piece of property and you have five owners, you know, do all, all those people get a vote in this? Or, or if it's one person owns multiple lots, so they only get one, one vote for the, for lots. So you had that discussion and I think that's embedded in that twenty-three, that question. But it also kind of overrides the fifty percent plus one and sixty percent petition that's in the century code. So I, I think that really needs some clarification, that twenty-three does.
I guess when we did that, kind of the example I showed was, when it's a subdivision, it's pretty easy to say by lot. You know, most subdivisions are similar, each lot is similar. The other example was in a water resource project where a district could be created and it might be ten two-acre lots and an entire section, and entire sections owned by one landowner. The ten two-acre lots are individually owned. Does the individual small two-acre lots carry the same weight as the six hundred acres? And we didn't know how to, how to describe that in, in the code. And that's, that's why we left that discretion. And I don't know how we would determine that. It would be on a case-by-case basis. If the benefit was only to that six hundred acres and they had to go get an easement, you know, for a drainage easement through those properties. Uh, it's hard to explain how to do that. That's kind of why, why we left it a little bit vague and open. So that we could address individual districts as they came.
Maybe something like, except for required by the century code, something like that in that statement. You know, you can make those decisions, you know, about how the votes count, except for where the century code says as the two hard stops, right, sixty percent petition and fifty percent plus one for protest.
So you're saying unless specifically described in the century code for procedure?
Yeah. And I guess that's all I'm asking is that we go with it.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you. I mean, that's, that's a valid statement.
All I can ever refer to or compare to is like in a city, it doesn't matter how many lots I own, I get one vote. I can own ten lots, Travis has one. I get one vote, he gets one vote in that special assessment district. I also understand what he's saying. In some circumstances, you got it. You know, it could affect a landowner, but.
But that discretion doesn't allow us to circumvent the century code.
Correct. Well, I don't disagree with that. We can't circumvent the century code. That's why I even ask on item number ten, if the century code says fifty percent, we gotta, it doesn't matter what our area is. We gotta follow century code. We can't supersede that.
So I guess with that, in the twenty-three, so the Mercer County Commission reserves the right to define the voting procedure on a district by district basis. And then we could just add to it that we would not circumvent any century code procedures. And I would move to put that in.
I'm still back to the why.
Right.
Do you want to add number ten to this add motion?
No, let's do one at a time.
Was that a motion?
I moved and Jamie seconded.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I didn't catch that.
You're not listening to me.
You got the wording, Carmen?
Yep.
Thought I was at home. Okay, I have a motion and a second to add to the wording. Line item number twenty-three, can you read back the language addition?
Okay, so to add to line item number twenty-three, except what would not circumvent century code? That's what we're adding to line item number twenty-three.
That's your motion, Travis?
Yeah, that we would not circumvent century code.
No, just for clarification. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Okay, do we have to address item number ten?
I make a motion to remove the sixty percent on item ten and move it to fifty percent plus one.
Based on area?
Pardon?
Based on the area, it's fifty percent of the area.
Okay, let's go back. I'm gonna make the motion and then we'll have the discussion, I guess.
So your motion is fifty percent plus one?
Yes, I was changing the word. Fifty percent plus one for the benefited property owners support the proposed improvement.
I would second that.
It'd be a little clearer if you put area in there, because that's, that's explicitly what the century code said, says.
Okay.
You want for?
Let's go to discussion then first.
Yes, we're at discussion now.
All right, we got a second. All right, explain to me more how you want to word it, so I understand it. He's a chair.
Yeah.
He's, he's looking for.
You, your language, you say in the century code, it says that it needs a minimum of fifty percent plus one of the benefited property owners support the.
Area owners.
Yeah, area owners?
Area owners.
Well, then, then we, you're scratching the word property and just saying of the benefited landowners?
No, area.
Fourth time they're telling me area. Of the benefited area owners, area property owners? Can I make a suggestion possibly on this? Could you just put in there per century code? And then if the century code changes or anything? So that rather than today trying to.
It coincides with whatever century code happens to be during that time, which it should stay the same, but sometimes it do.
Well, assuming it stays the same, but if you say per century code, then if we're defining it here today and we don't have the century code in front of us, that might be a way around. So basically, the district is prohibited unless at least a minimum.
You could still go with what you're saying, a minimum of fifty plus one of the benefited area owners support the proposed improvement, period, per this the century code.
How can, can we just strike the whole damn thing? Just say as per century code?
I don't care.
I, I don't even.
We come up with a wording to amend us.
At a public hearing on the resolution of necessity, the county commission will log any forthcoming protests as per century code. Does that even make sense?
As defined in the century code.
But what century code says forty twenty-two eighteen, if the governing body finds a protest to contain the names of the owners of the majority of the area of the property included within the improvement district, the protest shall be a bar against proceeding with any special assessment for the improvement project. That's century code. So it's.
Do I give, am I giving you a deer in headlights look right now? I didn't break it.
So why do we have this if we have a century code?
So just strike number ten and reword that as, reword the wording that's in the century code and put that in there. If you want to, rather than just per the century code.
At this point, I don't even know how to word it.
Well, I would use what's, I would use the wording that's on the century code. I would strike everything we have in ten. And I would use the wording what's in the century code in place of it. Is how I would do it.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. If, if we want to, there's, there's two ways we can proceed. We can, well, three ways. We can move forward with the motion, approve the motion, we can amend the motion, or we can go with the motion down.
I want to vote it down instead of.
Would be. We gotta, we gotta be careful with procedure though too, because procedurally, let's just go back into meeting rules. Procedurally, if you vote a motion down, you move on. You don't bring it up again. There you go. Procedurally, it's best to amend it. Otherwise, just, now, now I'm getting kind of segueing here, but if there's a motion on the floor and you vote the motion down, you don't make another motion on the same subject. Otherwise, we'll be, okay, you get it? So Jamie will make a motion, we vote it down, then Liza will make a motion, we vote it down. In other words, we'll just go round robin. So generally, in a, in a meeting procedurally, you move on, you amend it.
Let's amend it. And what I'll amend is, I just want, before I make the amendment, I want to make sure we're all on agreement how we want to word it. And I would, my, my, my opinion is to strike number ten and we'll use the wording that's presented in the century code.
Forty dot twenty-six dot, I'm sorry, forty dot twenty-six.
Two dash eighteen. Forty dash twenty-two dot.
So then ten would be pursuant to NDCC that number?
Yes, forty dot twenty-two dot eighteen.
It'd be that, that's simple. Just strike all the language that's there and just put pursuant, century code, whatever it is. I don't know the number.
Forty twenty-two eighteen.
Century code forty dash twenty-two is essentially this whole document that it's not even sure why we have the whole, this whole document.
Well, I'm gonna amend my motion to strike the wording in number ten and to provide it as pursuant to century code, whatever the number is. I don't know.
Forty dot twenty-two dot eighteen.
That's your motion, your amendment? Do I have a second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
My only discussion on this, I know it's been asked a few times why we're doing the procedure. We've been advised by your state's attorney to do it this way, so I think we should just continue with the process and get something in.
Even if we're duplicating century code, basically, that's all we're doing, so.
Are you satisfied with that?
We get it. Okay, any other further discussion? On the amendment, Rick, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza? Jean will vote aye. On the motion, Rick, how do you vote? Travis?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jean will vote aye. So now it's as per century code, basically. So now we made those changes. And so this has to be another, what is it, thirty days, public notice?
I don't know if it, I wish Todd was here.
That's what he said the last time. And then we gotta, if we make changes and it goes out again.
Yeah.
Another.
Okay.
Because.
And first I have to make these changes in here and get them to Todd to approve them. To approve the verbiage and everything.
And then we have to public, public, advertise it again. Todd's gonna say publicize it.
So I mean, it's at least two weeks, but.
That's what I've been doing, is two weeks.
Whatever, whatever the process we've been using, we need to follow it again.
Do you want a motion to approve it as amended today, so that it's clear cut?
Well, we, I guess we can, but we've got every change we made, we made a motion on, so.
Right.
I don't know.
It doesn't, I don't think it really matters. I just, we just have to.
I think we're good.
Okay.
You just have to, now you have to.
I'll go back today, I'll get these updates done, send it to Todd as soon as he okay's everything, then I'll send it to the paper.
Yep.
So then, once she gets it in the paper, and let's say next week might be the worst case scenario, but I have to have it in the paper two weeks.
Yep.
And then we'll put it on the next agenda.
Well, two weeks, so you have.
I mean, I mean, it'll be.
The February.
Huh? What did you say?
Probably the first one in February, just because I don't know if that'll hit the timing.
Or the second, maybe, because it won't go.
February seventh or twenty-first?
And this is gonna be the third reading?
No.
No, it's gonna be the.
Continue with the second.
It's still considered the second.
Yep, it's still the second reading. Because we amended it.
And it depends on when Todd gets back to me too, so.
It's probably gonna have to go to the February twenty-first meeting almost by the time you go to Todd and get it actually printed in the paper.
But whatever that is, I'll put it on the meeting. I can get it on as soon as those requirements are, are done.
Well, let's just say the February twenty-first meeting. Put it on that one. That should be adequate time. Okay.
Okay, I do have one more question. We're done with special assessment. The road's still out there. How, how do we get a meeting set up to discuss what we think the county owes what you think? How we can get the road fixed? How can we do that?
I could just request to have it on the next agenda.
Just put it on the agenda, I think.
And we'll ask, I think Ken should be asked to be here.
Yeah, she'll be down the road. Road stuff.
Well, we can get back to you.
I would, I would asked, ask that you probably have discussion with the road superintendent on this and the portfolio holder of the road department. And the portfolio holder of the road department, who's currently me. Which, we're gonna get to review policy holder positions here. So that, that could change, I don't know, maybe one of these guys wanted or something, I just, I don't know. But, that would be my recommendation, before you even just come to the commission. But you certainly can just bring it to the commission. Don't, don't, I'm not saying you can't, but I would, um, I would talk with at least those two entities and see if you get satisfied or not.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, that's, that's it on the special assessment.
Jean, do you have your list that you had typed up of the portfolio?
I've got portfolio stuff that I would like to see, you know, but, uh-
But you had made a list like last year.
Oh, I know.
Do you have that? I can run over and make copies so everybody can look at it, but I just didn't bring that back.
I got a bunch of markings on this one already, though.
Steve, what are you gonna run for county commissioner?
There's what I got. I already got one.
I'll have Mark make a copy.
Thank you, Jamie.
Well, let's, let's recess for a couple minutes.
Okay.
Okay.
Eleven-thirty?
Five minutes at the max. When everyone, when everyone's back, we'll reconvene. Within five minutes.
Hey, oh, hi. Talking to him, oh, okay.
Can I get a copy of this?
Yes, the changes. Yeah, I do, I have extra copies here. So this is what they started with?
Yeah, I, I was here.
Done the changes, they just made-
No, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. All right. Hi, so this is, this is gonna be actually as per all, the century code.
It looks like that's the round, yeah.
Because there's an interesting problem, I mean, an interesting example. If you don't vote, it's considered unlawful. But if it's, I think this is the same that the Washington Art Awards use for their special assessments. So if you don't vote, everything's against you. That's why you've seen, you know, in the county, it used to be very, very close. Cause it used to be- Originally, that's what it was, and then they changed it. If you're not irrational, if you're not interested in the voter of this project, then we're assuming you're approved. And that's why, cause I was the wrong one here.
All right.
An interesting point, you might want to-
Yes. We're going to get a phone call, we need something. It's one of the most- She's done. Still on break?
Yep.
Okay.
What time did we recess?
Eleven-thirty.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we're all back, we can reconvene. Uh, Jamie made a copy of my sheet, so my cheat sheet's kind of out there. What my thoughts were. Uh, I know Rick had, Rick had requested the road department, and I have no problem giving that up. So unless Rick says, oh, I don't know why he would say no at this point, cause he asked me if he could have it, so. Is there- And then, if Rick doesn't have a problem, I'd like to just take the auditor, recorder, and, well, which ones did you have here? Auditor, recorder, and, uh, veteran services? And I, I don't know, I always have felt, since I've been on the commission, that the auditor's portfolio should follow the, um, chairman. I, I don't know why I feel that way, so I'd like to have, have the auditor. And then Rick, uh, I'll- If it's okay with you, the recorder and the veterans.
Yes.
Okay. Who had the auditor?
Travis.
You don't mind giving that up, I hope?
No, you can have it.
Okay. Um, and Rick, wanted, uh, road department? Are you actually something, extension agency?
I know, I, I spend a lot of time with Craig all the time, and I just, I mean, every week, so, I don't know. And that's nothing but cuts and stone, I just asked Travis what he thought about it.
It doesn't matter to me, I, I work with him on the four-H council, so. I mean, we both talk to him, so it doesn't really matter who has-
Either way, I don't care either. I just end up, I know I visit with him every week, but it's up to you.
No, I'm-
I'm gonna leave it at your end.
No, he, uh, he can have extension.
Rick's got extension agency. There, made that short.
And I don't have planning and zoning, that was Rick and Travis had it.
I think you were, uh-
It was originally, but then it switched.
But I think you were-
Oh, I-
Oh. I see it now, gotcha, okay, gotcha.
On my sheet, on my updated sheet, I don't even have planning and zoning. I think, I think you were off that. I think this sheet is not fully correct, put it that way. I thought it was Travis and Jean.
Yeah, but we had Liza as an alternate, cause sometimes when we're running short for a quorum, we kind of had a designated third person, they're not actually a portfolio holder, they're just like, hey, you're gonna be the first one called.
I, I, I'm sorry, I, I spoke incorrectly. I was thinking Mercy County Economic Development. No, Liza was the alternate, yeah.
Okay.
Whether you knew it or not.
Anybody, anybody want P and Z? I'm willing to give that up too.
Okay, then Jamie.
I would like social services and West Central Human Service Center, if it's possible.
As far as I'm concerned, you can-
And then I'll take this year Marvin's term for Western Plains or Custer Health will go up, so.
I already have you written down for that.
Yeah, well, it's different than LEPC though.
Yeah, that's a different one.
And you fit, you're a much better fit for that West, uh, West Central Human Resources than, than, uh-
Right, and, and Marvin's term was through twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this would be the appropriate time to-
Okay.
To change that.
And I don't, this Western Dakota Energy, I've only had one contact with them, and that was a late meeting that Carmen had sent. Nobody has ever responded to emails. I don't know who to contact for that.
And I only sent it to you because I just saw you-
Right, yeah.
The thing, and I, so-
That's, uh, Jeff Simon. You could give that one to me if you want.
You're happy to take it, I feel bad because I've never, nobody's responded to the emails, so.
Okay, so Western Dakota Energy, Travis?
Yep. That kind of works hand in hand with Vision West.
Well, and that's what I was wondering if that went, like, yeah, cause it all came over that same flyer.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say Vision West, okay, got it. Yeah. All right, so, for review, I've got then Rick Bowman, sheriff, road, extension, West Central Human Service. Is that?
Dakota-
Echoes to Jamie.
Dakota Central Service, uh, governing board-
West Central and Dakota Central Services.
Is what Jamie wanted.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the difference between West Central Human Service and Dakota Central Service? Are they different?
They're different.
Yes.
I don't know what, I've never participated one in West Central.
So-
I did do the Dakota Central.
Jamie's gonna take the West Central Human Service also?
Yes.
She's gonna take both of those.
I'll try and get into, I mean, I talk to West Central every couple of days, so I'll see where we can get with-
So the West Central is a regional thing, the Dakota Central is a different regional thing.
Right.
But, yeah.
And then Western Plains or Custer Health is a difference in others.
Correct.
Okay, so Rick, you got your sheriff, road, extension agency, Mercer County, fair and zoning.
Correct.
Liza?
Okay, hold on. Rick, you said road department, extension agent, P and Z, sheriff, and what else?
Uh, fairward and P and Z.
I'll send you a copy.
Fairward, P and Z, okay.
If our things don't match, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Liza, I actually got a note, didn't have any changes for you.
Yes, I keep the treasurer, the airport, alternate for P and Z, Mercer County ambulance, Lucy Clark, alternate, and HR and EM.
I don't know what the hell I got going on. Planning and zoning.
Just alternate, though.
Alternate, I don't have, on one sheet I got you there, no, and I don't.
The one that I made a copy of, it says P and Z alternate for Liza.
Okay, so you're alternate P and Z, EM, nine-one-one.
No.
No, no, no.
Just HR, GM.
Cause nine-one-one is under the sheriff's department now.
Scratch that.
Scratch that.
Okay, emergency, HR, Lucy Clark, Mercer County Ambulance, Airport and Treasurer.
Correct.
All right. Jean is gonna be clerk of court, state's attorney, auditor, recorder, veteran services, policy committee, weed board, and Mercer County Economic, weed board. Jamie, do you have an interest in that?
I did, but I don't, it doesn't matter to me. You can keep it.
I don't, I don't mind. Then Jamie?
Okay, go back to Jean to yours. Do you still have state's attorney?
Yeah.
And clerk of court?
Yeah.
Veteran services, recorder?
Auditor.
Okay.
You gotta put up with me. Policy committee, weed board, and MACAD.
Do you still want MACAD?
Policy committee.
I, I don't care.
Do we need it?
I mean, I go to most of those meetings, I talk to Beaver quite a bit and Buster. I mean, I'm the alternate, do you want me to be the voting member?
You can be the voting member. We'll switch that.
I'll be the alternate on that one, cause I do go to that one.
So, we'll put Rick as an alternate on MACAD and then put me the voting member.
Oh, Rick is gonna-
I'll just be the alternate, though.
Yeah.
I do, I do attend some of them, I like going to that one too, so.
Okay, so Jean is completely out of that one, then?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Okay, so that scratched that one off the bottom of my. Jamie, landfill, buildings and ground, Missouri River Advisory, Super campus schools, and this one, I don't know, what are these?
LEPC, yep.
Dakota Central and Western Plains.
And West Central. I have Western Plains and West Central, they're-
Human services.
There's also another one, West Central?
Yeah, that's the one we took from Rick.
Yeah, Dakota Central, I think.
Yeah, cause Western Plains is a Custer Health one, then you got Dakota Central, and then you also have West Central Human Service Center.
There's three of them.
Three of them. Jamie wants all three.
Yeah, she can go on all.
Cause they all work together.
Yep.
Woof, so there's LEPC, that's totally-
That's a different thing.
And then there's Dakota Central, Western Plains, and West Central.
Correct.
Yes.
You got all of them, okay. Western Dakota Energy, Travis.
Yeah.
Tax director, co-conversion with Vision West, planning and zoning, gas and oil, Lucy Clark, water resource, library, and MACAD voting.
Yep.
Okay. Are we good?
Is there anything anybody else found differently?
Did she get all that?
Well-
Somebody else not planning and zoning, I think.
I'm gonna play nice in the sandbox.
Okay.
I'll tap them on it. Once you guys are done, then let me take a copy of it. And then I'm gonna look at that, I'm gonna listen to the recording, and then we'll go from there. And actually send it out to everybody, just to verify everything is correct.
Thank you.
I'll send you a copy also, what I-
But, yeah, once you guys are done, are you done?
I think we're done.
Done, okay.
Are we gonna give updates, or?
Let me have a piece, make a copy of it, I'll give it back.
We're done with the reorganization.
Okay, we have updates yet?
Okay. Now, got that done, now just portfolio updates, wanna start with myself. I, I'm gonna look at mine. Uh, road department, we didn't have them here today, but things are going as is, there's still some discussion on how we got some roads that need fixing. Well, now that'll be under Rick's umbrella. But I was, uh, told them I wanna meet with a contractor or two on County Road Seven, cause that needs work, not just gravel, that needs work. And then, we haven't had any big snow events, we had a lot of ice.
You better knock on some wood down there.
And someone gagged Jamie. I'm trying to just, try and hold back. And, uh, I did see they were out, did some sanding during the ice, but that was bad. There were, there were roads, I mean, they just didn't. Twenty-six was unbelievable, that didn't ice off for days. And they did have it sanded. Uh, clerk of court, just asked him this morning, everything's going good. I said, good, no news is good news. State's attorney? Okay, we'll move on. Policy committee, we haven't met, weed board, they didn't.
Back to policy committee, do we have a guideline for policy committee as to terms? Yes. All that? Yes. You have, or who, whom has it? We have it, right here. So what do you want? Can I just look at it sometime? Just copy? I can give you a copy of all the boards, and then they have their expiration dates on them. Okay. Absolutely. I had asked a few of the other policy committee members, and I got your, that is so. Move along, Jean.
Yeah, that's right. I supposedly have them all too, but it could be out of date. I got expiration dates and stuff on everybody. And, uh, MACAD, they did, they didn't meet either until this month sometime.
They won't meet until February, I believe.
That's it for me, Rick?
Okay, I'm gonna start with sheriff's department. We've got through pretty much everything that we've had this last month that I don't even wanna talk about, but, um, financially, we've got, through everything, not, uh, the funeral expenses. The, uh, thing that Terry did mention that they are looking for some cars, they might look at some twenty-threes that are out there that aren't, they're brand new yet, but they're, they're looking and they're, they're searching and stuff, so. they are looking for some cars. They might look at some 23s that are out there that aren't, they're brand new yet, but they're looking and they're searching and stuff, so. That, uh, that portion, I mean, that's just ongoing. The other thing is, uh, we did meet yesterday with, uh, there was some, uh, let me just make it sweet and short on, uh, Carmen and Terry, Gwen and myself and Jean, we met on some issues across the board with time cards and things like that. I met over the phone with Tanya on it, and she guided me through this, and I'm gonna say is that I thought our meeting went really well at the end. It was, um, we were looking for solutions and I think we did find what everybody was happy with, so. That was a good, good meeting. It turned out at the end, I think everybody was satisfied.
Yeah, it was good.
On both sides, so. That was, I was thinking when I got there that somebody's not gonna be happy because, you know, there's, so that just, but it turned out we're, we were okay with some of it. Fairward is, um, not, we have a meeting on the 17th. Uh, nothing's really updated there at the moment. It's kind of the holding pattern other than. I instructed, uh, as of our earlier conversation, I instructed the treasurer to get ahold of you to process that 17th, so it could be set in January, so.
Yeah.
I told him to do his thing.
Yeah.
And then, um, um, let's see. P and Z, we didn't meet. They're gone, so. And then, um, I don't even know what all I had in mind. I didn't, I, I haven't been to the West Central or whatever it is over there. I just basically said, uh, sort of, gee, I didn't even sign the paper as because you're technically a McLean County employee when you're on there. And I, I figured that she can take care of that when she gets there. That's all I had.
Travis?
I just looked it up. Vision West annual meeting is at the Cobblestone Inn in Beulah on January 18th.
18th, good.
Yep, it will have this, uh, social starts at 8:30 in the morning, then the meeting will start at 9:00. They're gonna head out to Catoa at approximately 11:00 AM for a tour, and then finish the meeting, um, once they get back to town. Um, Coal Conversion hasn't, uh, met in a while. I'm assuming they'll have an annual meeting here soon. As Rick mentioned, uh, we haven't had anything on planning and zoning for a couple of months on the agenda. Cindy should be back, I think, the beginning of next week. Um, Lewis and Clark, we had the annual meeting in December. Um, I think I kind of recapped that at the, uh, December meeting. Um, Water Resource Board meets second Tuesday. Um, I wasn't able to attend the last one, um, but they're just kind of in their off-season stuff. Um, Library Board, um, will meet again in February. Just to mention with the Library Board, that's usually, um, you can have two, three-year terms, um, so, nothing, nothing to worry about there. Um, MACAD hasn't met in a while. Um, Western Dakota Energy, um, they haven't done anything new in a while, but like I said, they kind of coincide with Vision West. I think that's, that's all the updates I have.
Liza?
Um, treasurer, I didn't get a chance to check in with her. She hasn't called me about anything, but I know she's probably just busy collecting tax monies coming in and then working on any forms that anybody's bringing in as far as the veterans, um, tax. I believe that's due in February too. Um, Airport Authority, I haven't met with them since our last meeting. Uh, we will have it on the second Tuesday here coming up. Then, um, P and Z, I didn't have to go to. Ambulance, uh, just a heads up that that meeting may change from the Tuesday to the Monday night, but they will keep everybody posted and put out the paper if it does actually change to the Monday night, so Tuesday. And, let's see, Lewis and Clark, I didn't go to because I'm an alternate. HR, we already went over. Um, putting out that posting and getting that position hopefully filled here pretty soon, within the next couple of months. Um, EM, I am working with Tanya on getting all that information to all of us as regards to that, um, part-time position and what that would look like and how that posting would look like as well. So hopefully by our next meeting, I'll have all that information for the EM posting of the job position as well.
Is that something that we've been working with all over County? Are we gonna continue to include?
Yep. Yeah, so that's why this one has taken just a little bit longer too, because as soon as Tanya gets it done, then I'm gonna get it over to Oliver County, check with them, and then get it back to you guys too, so.
And that's where we changed, there's a set fee now for Oliver County?
Correct, yeah.
And that started January 1, or did that start in last year?
I think it starts January.
What was the question?
The set fee, where it's just like the set amount, just the hourly rate for the Oliver County portion of EM.
It is a five-year agreement we have with them.
But I mean, it's, it's a set fee.
Yeah, it's a set.
Amount that we get.
It's our joint powers agreement we have with them.
Right. I was just wondering if that started now?
It actually, we did a five-year, five-year agreement now, and I believe last year's when we did it. 22.
Was it for 911?
Yeah, we just did that.
No, no, it was for EM. We separated them.
Yeah, we did because the Sheriff's Department has one.
Sheriff's took it. There is a separate joint powers agreement for EM with Oliver County.
Right.
And that, within that agreement is the set amount.
Right.
One fee, yeah.
Yeah.
But when did that start?
I believe it, last fall, I believe it was one week.
February, the first of February is always the time that it got.
Well, Terry and I went down, Terry has to go down, and he went down there, when he got that EM job, when was that? Couple of, uh.
That was this fall.
November, roughly.
Yeah.
So we went over there and that's when they, they signed the joint agreements and he wanted to go, he moved everything from these hourly things to
Okay.
A set fee.
And he has that agreement. Well, I have a copy too, but.
Correct. Either way.
That was separate from that.
We're on the set one. Yeah, so I should, hopefully by our next meeting, have information as far as what I might propose as far as putting up for the EM position. And then again, that would be under us and not the Sheriff's Department anymore.
Sure.
And we go back.
Yeah, back to the commission. Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Liza?
No.
Jamie?
Uh, Jim and Candy were both here. LEPC hasn't met. Um, I'll just start Cluster Health now, Marvin's term, I believe. I gotta look if it was start of '24 or if it went into like March or April.
What committee is it?
Western Plains or Cluster Health.
It's their actual board.
Yeah.
I have that written. That's not on that, on my sheet.
Oh.
It's on the sheet. It's just, it's.
No, I thought I had.
Marvin was still an active member.
Until '24, but I didn't know if there, I kinda looked.
I thought I have the date on my, but I don't.
Okay, look and see if you have a date on there, because I thought I had him on here.
Um, and school should reconvene tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So I haven't tried it with Buster.
I don't have it on this one.
So mine are short and sweet because Jim and Candy are here.
I guess we'll. We'll find that for you, Jamie. We'll find that date for you.
I talked about that last time, our board meeting. Travis had one too.
We'll find that date for you, Jamie. Not right now. Later. It will come later. Next meeting, you can ask me again. Jean, are you gonna get that?
Oh, Candy did, um, Candy did, what did she say yesterday? They did send out two semi-loads of metals and thought about $2,900.
Yeah, I see it's all cleaned up out there. It was just out there.
But then she also just sent me a picture of the last rain and snow and the loader and how messy it is, so she said to show all of you.
Well, I'll tell you that, though, we, we, we gotta do something up there in our landfill. That, there are days, uh, it's unbelievable. I would like to have you all come out there and drive that.
Well, and that was a discussion that was had because the city of Beulah workers were upset because their truck had gotten stuck. We had this, I know, a few months ago when it was so soft. City Hayes and I talked to them and they were just appreciative that Candy was able to stay open and do as much as she could, but with the weather, there was, you could only do so much.
Yeah.
And you can only dump in certain spots and you can, I mean.
And like I say, my concern is.
And she has tried putting that recycled asphalt down, but it just pushes right in, so.
It's not just the mud, it's the mud and then it freezes. Oh, my word.
Yes.
It's, that's not good. You hit rocks. Yeah. Anyway, okay. Anything else, Jamie?
No.
Has anybody got anything else for the good of the meeting? We are adjourned. Pardon? Wait.
Can you sign this?
You write it down.
And then I'm gonna go make a copy of this and I'll.
Okay.
I had talked to him after, one of we tried, we tried to plug all that air solar, had tried to plug into it, but it wasn't working. So, he was gonna look at that.
He's ever been up in a vertical.
Or?
The thing, the paper's long enough that we should have a page, so he was like, maybe bigger.
Well, if you add one here and one over there, or one on the other side. And then, we're, we're not set up really well. Like, if we had, if we were a pyre, you could have it in front of us and then have something somewhere where we could see.
And even this, when they built this, if it had, like Dunn County's is curved, and Mizworks is curved, because Jean and I are leaning back to try and hear each other.
Well, I can say with anything on this side, I can, you know, you can't even see them. I didn't know, I didn't even know you left.
Which time, well, the first time I tried to see phone call, but the second time I was gonna go into a coffee fit, so I was like, get out of here.
No, I mean, we could, of course, I mean, this, this thing could be.
Well, maybe that, maybe, well, we could pull it out and turn it towards us, but then no.
That's what I'm saying.
Or, no, I was even thinking too, is if they had, if we had something up here that they could see off of the screen. But I mean, it was just, you gotta think outside the box and get to that point.
Well, I mean, where the podium is, if you had something that we could see behind this, that everybody else could see.
Would make a lot more sense.
I know we're paying them stuff.
That's why if you had a couple of them. Around, you know, you could have different.
Write it down. I think it could be better even live, or even like, plug in and show their presentations and then get them here. But all these H2As, I don't know where I go to. And I know, I mean, we all have them up here, and we all have them up there, but we don't.
Probably just need the IT to cover it and then go through stuff.
But that, wasn't this just done? Getting just done, is it? When they get the course.
Which was.
Just done?
Just done.
Just done?
All of a sudden, decade ago.
I just think that, you know, I would think that there would be a better, could use a way to make this fifty years, but, I mean, without.
Easy enough, obviously, to you, and you're in the.
We're kind of set up like a court.
Yeah.
A commission. Like it's something.
So you can, like the judges.
Now, it's on the side, it's which you can see.
But I mean, if a guy got to the point that started thinking about it realistically, about some of the engineering into it, then like, you know, you can probably use these things to help with things.
I'll stop where we're doing. Actually, let me do this and, because I wanna make, okay, because which one were you looking for? Were you looking at the committee? This is updated. I wanna make sure you get the most updated one.
How, like, how?
Because I go through and I call the committees and I find out who's on there, and I've been updating this as I went.
Like, what their expiration terms for.
Because it's a two-year term.
Okay.
And she started, she, as soon as they get on, then we put the expiration date, two years. So she got on in '22. She became, she re.
But is there a limit on how many, you know, because Travis just said the library board is two, three-year terms. Does our policy committee have any, um, limits?
As far as I know, I.
As long as we, as long as it's approved, it just keeps going?
So do they, I mean, do we gotta approve them every year?
You know, Gwen would be the one that you'd ask for that.
That, that's all I'm asking, is if there's any guidelines as to who.
Or it would be in the policy committee, the policy book, I mean.
I would like to see.
Well, I looked in the employee handbook.
And it didn't have any.
There's nothing.
Okay, then I would, I'm gonna, I'll go ask Gwen. Because she would know. And honestly, the library board, I didn't know they, they limited theirs.
That's, that's the only reason I keep, when he said that.
All I got on here is it's three-year term, June appointment.
But apparently you can, he said you can only have.
What does the P and Z do?
Two, three-year terms.
See that?
Because that comes.
I would say then Cindy would have to know that.
This is.
There's any limit, but I kind of think there isn't.
Well, I think there's gotta be, because they keep coming up with, uh, um, terms on, we have to approve them for their terms, it was so, but I don't know.
Those are the things I'm just questioning or wondering as yet, if there's terms.
I wouldn't think that she would be on there for life, so to speak, if you wanted to serve.
That's where, like with Cindy, she would be the one to ask, because she has the book. She holds a book that contains all their policies of that board.
I was questioning our policy committee.
Yeah, and that's where, okay, and let me go talk to Gwen and see what I can come up with. And then, uh, yeah, because I like to keep this thing up and I like talking to all the different board people that control it, so. Uh, like Beth, I called for the library board. I like to do that and then keep it up to date, so then we know. But that's a good question. Are there limited terms? Are there limits, only will be in on that.
When he said that, that's where I, and I had asked about this before, because I couldn't find it in the employee handbook as to if there's. A second stop, or, is that term, whatever. All her number of terms.